You're on live?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday evening, June 21st, 2023 Town of Norfolk Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. The hour being 7:10, I call the meeting to order, and let me just read you this quick reference on how we access the meeting. In accordance with the provisions provisions of Massachusetts General Law is Chapter 38, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will meet tonight, Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, at 7 o'clock, actually, at 7:10 in meeting room 124, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. Additional public access to this meeting shall be done via Zoom online video conferencing, and I see we have some folks that have lined up for that, so that's good. To join, follow the web link or call the dial-in number listed below in the start time under the start time called to order. Please be advised that this meeting will be audio and video recorded for future broadcasts by Norfolk Community Television. Okay, welcome, everybody. The hour being 7:11, our first public hearing is scheduled for 7:01. Two Old Pond Street special permit is an application before us. I don't know if the applicant is here on Zoom. It's an application for a special permit for a deck for Two Old Pond Street. Is the applicant in the room or on Zoom?
I think it's Justin. Oh, no, John.
This would be applicant Patrick Marks.
Let's see.
And we're not sure if the applicant will present tonight? We don't know?
We do not.
All right.
Should I still read it in?
Why don't we read it in, and then we can continue it till later this evening and go back to it. If they show up, we'll entertain it.
All right. Notice hereby given accordance with Chapter 48, the Massachusetts General Law is enailing all amendments thereto that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals in room 124, the Norfolk Municipal Building, on Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, for the following applications at 7:01 PM. For special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, as amended, and Sections 310-6.4 and 310-7.6D of the Norfolk zoning bylaw to allow the alteration or enlargement of existing nonconforming structure. Property is located at Two Old Pond Street, Two Old Pond Street, Assessors Map 19, Block 81, Lot 2, in the C1D zoning district. That's it.
Thank you, Joe. So since the applicant's not here at the moment, can I can we get a motion to continue this hearing until later this evening?
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until later this evening. If they arrive, if they don't arrive, we'll continue at 2:01.
Yeah, and I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Our next appointment scheduled for 7:03, and the hour being 7:00, it's like 7:14, is a continuation of a special permit application on 175 North Street. So if the applicant's here, we'd be happy to talk about 175 North Street again. All right. So if you want to join us at the microphone, that'd be fine, and you can just identify yourself for the record, and we can pick up where we left off on one set. Please identify yourself for the record.
Stephen Doherty, homeowner.
Welcome, Stephen. So we started the hearing last time, and if you want to get us an update, or I don't know if there was any new information. Is this we were waiting for the plot plan on this one? Is that correct?
Correct. So we've been in contact with John, yeah, Glasser.
Yep.
And he's just been booked through to really come out and redo it. I believe he'd been in contact with you.
Yep.
I'd been working day shift at the prison all week, so I haven't been able to talk to him directly. My father has been in contact with him and going back and forth with all that.
And I don't have it in front of me, but I think we did have a plot plan.
We have the mortgage.
The mortgage.
We had the mortgage plot plan.
Yep.
Is that is that something you can put up on the screen?
Yep.
I think the concern at the last meeting was we didn't have the plot plan to show the setbacks and so forth, and I think this plot plan, although it's dated, will probably show that.
I believe one of them I passed over did have
Yep.
the boundary lines.
Yeah, I think the thing where you're concerned, if I remember correctly, it was
Septic one didn't have it.
That was right.
It had the septic setbacks, and then the other one I, yeah, I believe it's this one.
All right. So when that comes on the screen, if you want to walk us through that, that would be helpful, is to show us what the setbacks are, and and I think there's I think your proposal, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there are there are no changes.
Correct. I'm just, the structure will be going up from the four outside corners.
Yeah.
Just straight up, and then the small one that has the 22 setback is staying at the same height it's currently, which is just a single level.
So you're doing a two-story or one-story addition?
Yeah, so pretty much here, 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 and there will just go straight up.
So you're not you're not changing any of the setbacks or anything?
No, I'm not changing any footprint or anything like that.
You're not even changing the foundation. You're just using the same foundation, everything, right?
Correct.
The 22-foot, your short setback?
I would say that's the shortest one.
Okay, which, this I don't have memorized. Which one is the shortest setback?
Twenty five.
Twenty five.
That's the one that's triggering?
Yeah, and that's what's triggering it.
Well, no, the front, the front, the front's the.
The front's the, oh.
Yeah, the front's supposed to be 50.
Yeah. Apparently, well, from the from the from the physical street, my house is about 60 feet off the asphalt, but the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The county has.
The county, I guess, I think it was like 1920, did the, because this was a paper, North Street was a paper road.
Yep.
And the county came in to do an actual road for the town, and they just bought about 20 feet of my front yard, and that whole side of North Street. So North Street on paper is about 60 feet wide, but it's only
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
regular asphalt.
16.
Yeah, so that's where I end up losing the frontage.
Okay. I think this was the one missing piece we didn't have at the last meeting.
Okay.
At least, and just just be aware that if the board votes approval of this special permit, I don't want to mislead you and think you may have to get more plans for the building department for your permit relative to some of this stuff, but I think for our purposes, we have the information we need.
Yep.
And again, I'll open it up to the board if there's any if there's any questions.
I'm comfortable your house isn't moving.
Moving up.
Yes, just up.
It's good to hear the history about the road.
Do you have a do you have a well, or are you on Town Water?
I so it does have a well, but I had to go to Town Water because I it had a cesspool when I first bought it.
Okay.
And I so the cesspool is actually in the back, and I ended up putting the septic in the front.
Yeah.
So when I put the new septic in, the town required me to tie into Town Water because it was on the street, so.
Well, you also you're you're you have to be 100 feet apart.
Yeah.
So there's no way of doing that on that lot at that point, so.
And apparently, I haven't really dealt with it, but it's a shallow well, too.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a it's a battle.
Oh, yeah.
So it actually is.
You can use it to wash, you know, wash your car and all that stuff, yeah.
When it runs.
Oh.
The motor is
Maintain it, right.
About 15 feet in the ground.
Oh.
There's a hatch.
Oh, okay.
That sounds like a lot of fun.
It's kind of sketchy.
I don't know that I could talk about that in public. That sounds like a decommissioning project, and let's just breeze past that.
That references to the old, that's just because this is a dated plot plan, that septic thing.
Yeah, the septic is now in the front.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
None.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public or on Zoom that has any questions?
Josephine is on Zoom, just.
Josephine, did you have any questions about this?
No, I'm all set. No, I'm listening.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience in person or on Zoom that has any questions or comments about this?
Positive or negative? No?
Okay. Nobody? Okay.
Thank you.
We have a do we want to obtain a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing for 175 North Street for the special permit.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
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 Aye?
Josephine?
And Josephine?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. So I think what we'll try to do is we'll see how this evening lays out. We'd probably want to get through this tonight and deliberate this after we get through the agenda and take a vote on it, and and you can check in tomorrow if you watch tonight, or you're welcome to stick around to see the outcome, but you've answered all our questions, so thank you very much, and, you know, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, scheduled for 7:05, and the hour being 7:20, you have Five Lakeshore Drive, which is a continued applicant, continued hearing from 5:24 for a special permit and variance. If the applicant is here from Five Lakeshore Drive, and I think I think he is.
He's on Zoom, yep.
He's on Zoom, if you'd like to.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Introduce yourself and let's get up.
I am one of the homeowners of Five Lakeshore Drive.
Welcome.
It's John Beveridge. My wife is Kristen. She's inside the living room with our son right now, so.
Yep, very good. So I which I forget where we left off on this one.
We left off last time because I was trying to explain where I wanted to put the front door, the plot plan, have the extended front porch for that. So I have the updated architectural plans to give a rough idea. Those might change as well, depending upon what happens with the building department pulling permits that way, but the exterior of the project will not change from what you guys have as far as the front porch with the special permit and the variance for the addition into our garage.
Okay. Could you put that up on the screen, just so we remember? Because I remember we had a straw vote, I think, last time, I think, to help you out a little bit, give you some guidance.
Yes, sir.
So the good news is, John, is that we did advertise a special permit.
Yep.
And so now the fact that you have that deck on, we can, the board can at least entertain the deck as that special permit for the deck, and then the variance for the garage, and you'll be all set, so.
I'll open it up to the board when we get there, if you have any questions for the applicant.
I think our our question was on the front door, where he was going to be putting the front door. If he squared that up, I'm.
That was the issue we had.
Yeah, because he was moving it.
Correct. The last architectural plans have the bedroom that was there off of the plans, so the front door now is where it'll be an actual entrance into like a living room, dining room area.
Yep.
It's the plans now.
So so is it going to move a little bit from where it is today on the is the front door moving a little bit?
Yes, it will.
That was the question, right?
Yes. If you look at the plans, you can see the bay window on the right side of the house, and then there's another window, and I believe then the door to the left of that next window.
Any questions, David?
No, I think it I think that sufficed what my questions were from last time.
Okay.
So.
Anybody else in the board have any questions?
Can we just recap, excuse me, recap?
Yes.
The special permit for the deck is because.
So there's existing deck on the.
Pre-existing nonconform?
Right.
And the special permit is to extend it the width, the width of the existing house. So when the addition, which the variance is for, with the two-car garage, will allow us to come from the garage to the extended pre-existing deck.
Right.
The special permit would allow us to enter into the new front door closer to the addition side.
And I think we were talking about the the variance primarily because obviously it's a clearly unique shape.
Right.
Correct.
The variance will be, you know, adding the garage.
For the garage, right.
So he's encroaching on the setbacks some more.
Correct.
But the thing is, it's appropriate where he's placing the garage.
Right.
Okay.
Because because of the uniqueness of the the shape, and he's surrounded by by frontage, actually, and it's such a unique shape.
Yeah, and kind of a similar situation is the last gentleman also, where River Road and Lakeshore Drive were actually 45-degree corners.
Yeah.
And then they turned Lakeshore Drive into a curve, which took some of our property, not as much as the other gentleman, but definitely a little bit. And on the plot plan, you can see the triangled area to the right side of our house, I guess, the left side, if you're looking at the front, that showed that triangle area with the circle.
Yep.
With the, that's pretty much the only area we would be allowed to build on our property without a variance.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. If there's no, is there anybody in the audience I might have asked or on Zoom that has any questions or concerns? I know I know one of the neighbors spoke in favor of this last time. She doesn't have to be here again, but.
They might be in Maine, I'm not sure.
But they've already, we've got them on record. We.
Yes, sir.
They were in favor of the proposal. Is there anybody else in the audience who are on Zoom? I can't see if anyone's raising their hand or not.
No.
Okay. They're being none. Can we get a motion to close the hearing?
Oh, can I ask a quick question?
Oh, she can.
What are the dimensions on your garage addition?
They are, we leave, it's kind of the 28 by, can you pull up the plans? Because one side's a little bit longer than the other. Can you zoom in on the actual?
Architectural plans.
Plans, yes, please. Because I believe the backside of the house is shorter than the front, but I believe it ends up being like 28 feet on the front side, 27 feet in the back.
And that's all garage?
It's a garage on the basement floor, and then for floor addition to bled into the existing house.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like it's 28 on the front, 27 on the back, and 26 on the side.
Correct.
Can you see that?
Yeah, I got it on my phone. That's why I could see it.
Any other questions?
The left-hand side of the drawing is the addition.
It's the news, yeah.
Correct.
Now, we need to go back to the deck special permit.
Sure.
Nothing's encroaching further on the setback, right?
Correct.
Right? It still needs a special permit for the deck because it's just being added
Extended.
Well, it's extended.
It's extended.
Standing along that.
Sitting along.
But within the encroach, no change to the setback, right?
Right. The setbacks are should still be like 25, if I remember. He's he's only going to 40. So the reason is the front, I think, the front.
Yeah, so the the deck is it's in the front yard, by the way, his house is situated with the properties. However, it's not encroaching any closer to the to the street, so it just run along that imaginary line.
But the fact that he extends it is reasoning to a special permit either way.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
That's right.
Because the front setback is only 25 feet.
Yeah.
The front's 50.
At least a motion.
Right, it's supposed to be 50, but you only have 25.
No, I have, I think of, I think I'm actually 49 feet to the existing house, if I remember the plot plan correctly.
Oh, 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 I got you, too.
He's got three front yards.
Yeah, you've got, yeah, you've got like, you've got like road on all three sides or something.
Yeah, so he can pick two as front and one as a side, and then he's got all those extra side yards.
Correct.
No, he's got a fun situation. All the roads, all the roads.
All the roads lead there.
So you're 49 feet off of Lakeshore Drive?
Yes.
Yep, all right.
And no, if you, I'm not sure it matters to us, but were you defined where the driveway would come in from? You weren't, I think you were.
I think they moved it.
Yeah, we're moving the driveway to where the garage would be, so it would actually be going into Lakeshore Drive.
Yeah, see, so.
On the curve.
I think it comes in, it comes off of River Road now, right?
Uh, no, I'm all I'm on Lakeshore Drive all the way around. River Road starts at the base of my property.
Okay, yeah, it comes in that way, okay, and now he's going to come in off of this side.
Well, it's confusing because they're both, they're both Lakeshore, right?
Right. It's all, it's like a big curve.
So now he's going to come in off this side of Lakeshore.
Right. Right now, he's coming in off this side.
Right.
And he's going to come in off this side.
Well, I think this is a side.
Where the garage, this is going to be the garage, so you want the driveway there.
Well, I didn't know if he's going to come this way.
The driveway, the pre-existing driveway is just going to get removed and placed to yard.
Okay.
I think we have a great thing going on.
All right. Any other questions for the board or anybody else? You're being none? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you.
Is there a second? A second? Okay, and this is for Five Lakeshore Drive?
Second on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, good. Go set then. Okay.
So just a roll call because Josephine's on Zoom.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing the hearing will do a roll call vote?
Josephine, yes.
Tim Martin, aye.
David Exberg, aye.
Chris Metcalf, aye.
And Josephine?
Also aye, Josephine.
Thank you. All right. All right. So now we have some appointments regarding, it looks like Mr. DePlacino's developments.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to deliberate afterwards and.
Yeah, you're welcome to watch. We'll.
You can stay on and.
We'll talk about it all up tonight.
Appreciate it. Have a good one.
There you go.
Thank you.
So the hour being 7:30, we have, we have appointments with Mr. DePlacido. I think he's on Zoom. And if so, we'd invite him to the meeting.
Hello, Tom.
Tom, you need to unmute.
Tom, I think you're muted.
There we go.
Hey.
Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. For the record, here, for two different projects, one is Village Green street that is a part of, there's some improvements that have to be done as part of the enclave development. And that's, the developer of that is E Norfolk LLC. And then the second one is Lawrence Street, improvements with the sidewalk on that one as well. And that's Abbeyville Development LLC. And basically, the DPW has reviewed some of the work that has to be done out there, and there's some different things that they would want to, want to see and some different things that have to be done as we're doing work. And I believe you have a letter in front of you from the DPW. Just basically asking to be able to make decisions in the field able to revise the comprehensive permit to allow them to make some of those decisions in the field so that we can expedite construction as we move forward with both of these projects. So the board would have to make decisions on two different comprehensive permits. And basically, all we're trying to do is work with the DPW. So I'm just concurring with what they're requesting on this.
Okay, thank you very much. And in our audience, we have, we have the DPW director, Mr. Blair Crane. And I think if we get the plan on, up on the screen, that would be helpful. We have it here, but does it show up there too?
Yeah, I want it to show up there. I don't know.
So you're going to close this out there.
Yeah, she has to show it there for the audience.
And that works fine as long as everybody can see it.
I mean, the people in the audience can see it behind.
These folks will see it.
Yeah.
The audience, Zoom on home can see it?
Yeah, people on Zoom can see it.
All right.
And then we'll, so I'll just add a little bit of background too, for the board and the audience. The, as part of the comprehensive permit for the enclave, for those who recall, there was specified in terms of the sidewalk roadway width, grass strip as part of the comprehensive permit. And which was a 22-foot wide continuous roadway width with a three-foot grass strip and a five-foot sidewalk. In order to accommodate a 22-foot continuous width roadway, a three-foot grass strip and a five-foot sidewalk, it was going to require a significant amount of work impacting what is out there in terms of existing conditions on Village Green. So when Mr. DePlacido met with DPW myself, we walked, the stakes are out on the, laying out the edge of the layout today out there, was to come back to the ZBA for consideration to better fit a sidewalk in with a roadway to minimize the impact to the existing neighbors on the street. So those impacts are, there's some stone walls in the layout, there's trees in the layout.
There's a mailbox.
There's mailboxes in the layout, and technically, all that stuff is within the town right away. But like I said, mailboxes, stone walls are all features that people like to have in the neighborhood. So the idea is to modify the sidewalk installation to best fit it to minimize the impact. So I have a few slides as we just walk through, which are from street view, so you can get a sense of existing conditions as if we were driving down Village Green. Now, this section in the, in the photograph here is the wider section of Village Green, which is, I think it's 20, 26, 27, something. It's definitely the wider section as you come off of Cleveland Street. Then you proceed, continue to proceed upwards, so you can see on the sides, the mailboxes, some of the plantings that are there and the driveway. Again, we keep, keep moving forward, and now you see some existing trees. Again, keep moving up, and then we get to the curve.
And when you. Sidewalk would be, my view would be on the left-hand side.
The left-hand side, correct, yep. As you get to this curve, as we approach the curve, that's when Village Green now, the width of the roadway tapers down.
Quite a bit, actually.
Quite a bit. So as you keep moving, oops, sorry, wrong way. So again, there's a tree here that would be impacted by the sidewalk. You see the utility poles. Keep moving down. Again, this tree, the goal is to save the tree?
There's about a half a dozen trees there that are pretty large that we would like to try to save as many as possible.
Trying to save the trees?
Obviously, the further off the road we get, the more trees and infrastructure will be impacted, so.
Can I ask a few questions?
Absolutely.
Just about history. I wasn't here for this. Howdy. So this is obviously off-site. What was the nexus here between this sidewalk on this street and the development?
So it ties into the development.
Okay, so was the idea that, does this go to a school, playground? Are we going somewhere?
To Cleveland Street.
Goes to Cleveland Street where we're going to dump them out with no sidewalk?
No, no.
No, no.
It does go, we didn't show.
The sidewalk.
Yeah, there's a sidewalk all the way out to Rockwood Road, which is 115, and then that goes up to the schools and everything.
I'm not sure this slide showed the Cleveland Street piece, but it does go around the corner to Cleveland. And tie into Rockwood.
And there is a, there is a sidewalk there already, if I remember correctly, not, not on Cleveland?
Just to clarify, it's, part of the project is the installation of the sidewalk on Cleveland Street to Rockwood Road.
Yeah, it's only, that's only like one house, right?
There's a couple of houses. It's a short segment, but, but nevertheless.
You're correct.
It would, it would, again, it would.
If you want to go back to the assessors, we could, we could point that out, if that makes sense.
Yeah, we can go back.
He's got something I could, yeah, that I could follow along with. So the, I've just, so the idea was that we were going to have increased pedestrian traffic at the time and that we wanted connecting sidewalks when this was permitted?
In general, whenever we had these opportunities, it was to bring better, let's say, road safety, pedestrian access to the existing residents as well as any new residents that might be coming into that area.
How did they react?
At the time, the support seemed to be there for the sidewalks.
Now, the nice, the nice thing about this, it appears that you don't have like a dead end, a sidewalk to nowhere.
Yeah.
This ties in right into Rockwood Road. So, you know, this is actually.
I just don't see the width though.
No, that's a good point. I think we'll recognize Blair, he can talk about that.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, because I'm just like, or you could one-way it, take out some pavement, and then we got a real safe situation.
That was the issue, and I think that's what Mr. DePlacido spoke about and Blair's here to address.
So obviously, there's, there's a lot of spatial issues here for various reasons, trees, infrastructure, drainage, mailboxes, obviously, there's a stone wall, there's decorative trees down there. Also, looking at this project from the enclave down, there are already existing sidewalks there.
So this actually ties into the existing sidewalks that continue on past the enclave and around that essentially loop back together and tie everything together.
Don't get me wrong, I love sidewalks, love pedestrian safety, walk my dogs every day, take my life in my hands. I live on Union Street, it's scary, but I was just, I'm just kind of asking, because by these photos, I see some major disruption and so.
There are. There's drainage issues that we're going to have to think about out of the box here without having to dig up, you know, majorly dig up the road. A couple of fire hydrants there, one gentleman, I believe, on the left-hand side of the road, the first house on Village Green. Part of his turnaround from his driveway is well within that space, so if we get off, if you add another three or four feet to what we want to do with the sidewalk there, then that obviously impacts that gentleman's driveway. Down around the corner, it looks like there's a ledge there, there are three major pine trees that are close enough together where if I take one or two of them out, the third one is probably going to die anyway. So you're looking at three lost trees there. Beyond that is another fire hydrant, another catch basin that has to be reworked. And then all the way down to a stone wall and a couple of nice decorative trees that are in people's front yards that I would prefer to not have to touch.
What's the narrowest width? What's your narrowest pinch point on the roadway itself?
I would estimate about 22 feet. It's narrowed down toward the enclave.
It's our widest fire truck.
I would say about.
It's not, it's not a real.
About, about nine feet.
I was going to say about nine feet.
They've been in the bay, but it's.
Blair, from a practical standpoint, do you anticipate that the sidewalk, I know it's kind of a work in progress and see how it lays out, but with the three, the three-foot strip would probably not be anywhere that, that would.
Right. Obviously, at that point, you want to try to stay within ADA compliance as best you can. This is, this project goes back a long ways, so. Especially when you look at the sidewalk that's down further, there's no grass strip there, that's tight against the road. So the thought would be obviously to try to minimize the impact on all the residents there.
Right.
And to bring the sidewalk to the curb to try to save as many trees and, and front yards as possible.
You've already mentioned there's a couple of trees that you could have, until you get there, you really don't know
Right.
the future of those couple of trees. But for the most part, it seemed like there were those two trees.
Yeah.
It might be that there'd be no three-foot strip, and we have to talk about, if there's a modification, the mailbox for one of the residents, talk about that. And I don't think there are any other plantings that we want to talk about, try to save.
How far off is that stone wall, for instance, off of the?
Stone wall is going to be safe, I don't know. We'll let you speak to that.
It would be, to be honest with you, I don't have an exact number, I didn't actually measure it, but I would, it's, it's tight. It's right against, it would be right against it if you didn't have to take it out to get in there and pave a sidewalk after the three foot and then another five. I think that you're, you're, you may lose it, but to be honest with you, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Do you want to speak about the mailbox?
Sure, so, so the Cleveland Street portion of this, we had emailed with a resident, one of these ladies here.
Hi, Patty.
So obviously, while trying to.
You live next door to the.
Make everybody.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So in an effort to try to make everybody happy, as happy as I can, while I try to fit all the parameters of this project together, I looked at, the resident didn't want to have her mailbox on the opposite side of the road, so I went to Millis today to talk to the postmaster.
For a safety reason, not just because I don't want to cross.
And I talked to the Millis postmaster today, and, and he was agreeable to allowing the six Cleveland Street mailbox to actually be on the other side of, be on Village Green without changing the address, just essentially putting the mailbox on Village Green, which, which.
There's a six, Village Green that's two doors down and.
Patty, just identify your name and address for the record, and then we'll, and then we'll let you.
Hi, Patty Akrush, 6 Cleveland Street. So I'm on the corner of Cleveland and Village Green.
Okay, thank you.
So the sidewalk's going to go in front of my house. First, let me say, I'm very happy about the sidewalks. It's not that I'm against the sidewalks at all, I think it's a great idea. I'm not against not having the grass because that's going to go into people's yards that, I mean, I have no problem with that. I have an issue with the possibility of my mailbox being moved across the street because directly across from where my mailbox is, is a stone wall. And I, we live on the corner of Cleveland Street, so people take that corner and they're at like 40 by the time they get to my house, because they're a little bit crazy. So that's my concern, it's a safety issue. I'm not against the project.
And that was why I went to the postmaster today to see if I could alleviate that your concern. And, and he, I don't think that's.
Wilds is even more unsafe than mine is.
Right. And I don't know what to do about that one at this point, but.
Well, I think you, you'd best think wisely on that one. That is, they, they're right on the corner of Cleveland Street.
Yeah.
If you sit there, that's a safety issue.
Absolutely.
Period. No question about it. No, maybe it is, maybe it's not. It's a safety issue.
I would agree with that.
I mean, I don't even know why we're discussing it, to be quite honest with you. It's crazy to even think about moving those mailboxes.
So do we have a proposed plan for where you'd like to put them in light of these? Because I saw in the correspondence, field corrections, and things of that nature, which is like a plan, but not. And so I was wondering if you do have this in plan view, because what I don't understand at this moment is, so we're going to remove the parkway, the landscape strip. That's cool. I get it, it's pretty narrow in here. Are you proposing, though, that we're going to have sidewalk adjacent, like immediately adjacent to roadway? Are we planning a transition material?
There will be an asphalt curb along the edge of the road, and then it'll immediately, at the top of that elevation, come across to a sidewalk.
Okay, so.
Would that be like a cape?
I see why you now have some stormwater issues to deal with.
Can I just say one more thing?
Go right ahead.
At least two and a half years ago, there were people from the town parked on my yard. My brother actually had a conversation with them regarding this whole sidewalk project. So my question is, how is it all of a sudden now they're really realizing there isn't enough room for the three feet of, of grass and the sidewalk? There's never been enough room on either side of the street. They actually moved the telephone poles on my side of the street because originally I was told it was going to be in front of my street and on the side of my house. It was going to go down my side of Village Green. I'm wondering how this is all of a sudden coming about now, and it wasn't realized in the planning stage when this whole thing was agreed and they were going to do the this, that, and the other thing.
Okay. I don't think I can give you an exact answer, but my, my only comment would be, when it was approved, that was the standard. And you, in theory, you could still do that. You'd just be taking away people's property and trees, and we don't want that, so now we're trying to modify it. It wasn't like, the land is there, it could be a bigger taking. It wouldn't be a pleasant situation or a good outcome. So I'm not saying it was, so now when we go to build it and you look at what's on the ground, and what Blair is stuck with, I think now the idea is, we want to, we don't want to do that. So we want to skinny it down. We want to, we don't want to do all these takings and change stone walls, we don't have to. So if you had to, you could build it out that way. It would just be a lot more cost and a lot more disruption, and I don't think anyone would like it.
So that's the law to begin with? That's the way it's supposed to be done if you put in a sidewalk automatically?
Yeah, the new, the new, the new codes are, you're supposed to be the three feet and then the, the, but in reality, you're trying to fit
What's on the ground?
New wine into an old wineskin, in reality, and it, it doesn't make sense.
So it's not, it's not a good answer, but I think that's probably what happened. It's not a good answer, but that's.
Some of the flexibility might be that this is not a state vote, for example.
Right.
This is within the town situation, so gives us some, I guess.
It does give us leeway, because you're not Rockland Street.
But at the time, even the enclave, whichever one was going through permitting, likely the board at that time wasn't, you know, we're going to include the connectivity to the sidewalk, but we didn't go out and engineer the whole sidewalk for that plan. We just made it a condition, and then, could we have, we could have, I suppose, go right, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Donna Shaw, I live at 11 Village Green. And I have been to meetings from day one about this development, and I believe we made great compromises in getting this. My issue is still, you put a cul-de-sac onto a cul-de-sac. You put 80 additional cars that impact relatively six houses into this development. They come by my house all the time. They, one house, the rest of Village Green and Stand Hall has basically had no impact on this development. It does impact the six houses that you passed to get in here. When you first put these plans in front and we saw that there was going to be a sidewalk, grass strip, berm, and the road, it was accepted by all of us in the neighborhood that were concerned about it was going to be an asset. And I never thought and gave it any further thought. I come home last week, there are stakes in my front yard going all the way, and it looks different to me. And I thought, well, what the heck's going on here? And I explained, ran into them, this is the new sidewalk that we're going to do. I said, that's strange. That's not the one that was approved. It was the three feet and grass. I'm, it's going to be a benefit to have a sidewalk, I'm not against that. I am against moving the mailboxes. I know it's not a big deal. It impacts six houses. None of the people that in here, our mailboxes have been on our side of the street since I moved there 46 years ago. My mailbox is in front of my house. My mailbox is in front of my house. And Blair told me that you can't turn a mailbox sideways because the postman can't see inside the mailbox. There are mailboxes turned sideways all over this town. North Street has them, they enlarge South Street, all the way in Midfield. It's, it can't be a federal law that says you can't do that because it's done everywhere. I don't want my mailbox to be moved, moved over into the middle of my neighbor's yard over there, I'm sure he doesn't want my thing, my mailbox over there. For the sake of the six people that this has been such an impact to, I think we need to make a consideration, leave my mailbox on my side of the street. I understand that you can't take the width of the sidewalk to put a mailbox straight forward, turn it sideways, and it can be acceptable as not that impactful. Because it's a cul-de-sac, the mailman who comes in and goes down one side and delivers all the mail, then goes up to the enclave and dumps all that mail there, then comes down, finishes around Stanhope, he still has to drive right by my house. So he can still deliver the mail on the right-hand side of Village Green with these houses. In the end, I think it will be beneficial to have the sidewalk, in the end, it won't be beneficial to me or the six other people to have our mailboxes moved over to the other side of the street. I think if we have to make concessions here because we don't have the room for the grass strip, which my mailbox could then have stayed there if you were doing it that way, right? It would have been perfectly acceptable. Now you're voting to change Tommy's plan and the town's plan to make concessions because of the width of the road and everything like that, then I think make concessions for the six people, the eight people that it affects. Patty shouldn't be crossing the street to get her mail, the Wiles shouldn't be crossing the street to get our mail. The people on the rest of Cleveland Street all the way down, they don't cross the road. Their mailboxes are on that side of the street. I just think that this is, would be an end to some of the problems that we've had with this.
So what are our regulatory barriers to leaving their mailboxes alone? Do we have an ADA issue? Is that your biggest issue? Because the rest of it
That's why I went to see the postmaster today, because of all my areas of expertise, postal regulations is not one of them.
This seems like, can you just build a sidewalk around it, leave their mailboxes alone? I know you've got a width issue on the other side because of a Stonewall. The only issue I can really think of in practice here is an accessibility issue, which is very real, governed by federal law and totally applies. And so I could see maybe a need to go to AAB if you don't, if you have a clearance issue. But I don't see a real practical issue, post
I would have to try to think out of the box to think about what to do
Postmaster notwithstanding, can we just leave these post mailboxes alone?
Ten years from now, if that thing's embedded in the concrete, I'm going to have to figure out how to change it.
And we, it seems
It's not a precedent, go down North Street.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, whatever
Well, don't think about mine, think about solving theirs.
Do me a favor, just direct all, direct the conversation through the board.
In my mind, the same way that we leave tree wells open and sidewalks for trees so that the roots can access, it seems you can leave a little tree well open for a, I mean, 90% of mailboxes are a Homer bucket and some quick crates, so this isn't, I don't think we need to like really, unless there's a real regulatory barrier here, which I can envision one that is real, but otherwise, it doesn't, it just makes sense to make these folks happy, build the sidewalk, everybody wins, it's not beautiful and perfect exactly, you put a couple like sunflowers in, I don't really care. In my mind, this works, I, I'm not quite seeing the problem of re-engineering the whole thing.
One thing I've noticed that sometimes we've meandered where we can, meaning I know around the trees, if there's a way to get around a tree, that's been done in a few places, even though you're still hugging the road, but you might break away from that for a short stint if it's possible.
Protect the trunk, be cool, make sure wheelchairs can get through and scooters, like this, you know, there has to be a
I'm saying, but that may be a little bit of meander, there may be a bit of meandering. Or if you do have to take a tree, you're going to maybe plant one somewhere that makes up for it in some way.
I think the request tonight is to, to give Blair some leeway
Yeah.
On the modification, so he can make real decisions in the field, so Mr. DePlacido knows what's going on, and they all know, they don't want to come back every time they touch the tree, or if they meander, so to speak, or whatever they do, we're trying to give them a little bit of leeway here. But we do want to address, we've heard, we've heard real concerns here, and well presented on the mailboxes, and Blair said, look, I'm not the mailbox expert, I'm doing the best I can here. And he's trying to get a, a solution to it, and our blessing that he has leeway to modify some of this, we wanted to address these ladies' concerns. You know, I want to, I want to go back, your concern was with the mailboxes, not with the three foot strip. And I'm, I'm not the expert on mailboxes and what the, what the code is on that. I'm not sure the US government is either, they may be on paper, but you can find a million different situations out there, and I don't know what the enforcement is, I have no idea. Blair said, he says, I'm not the expert either, I'm doing the best I can on this. I just see from a practical standpoint, if the, if the sidewalk were to go in and the mailbox were to stay, I don't know what you'd do out there in the field to, to do it. Do you have any thoughts on it?
Well, I think the intention, obviously, we're going to try to meet everybody's expectations, the residents' expectations, obviously have, have addressed one of the issues already by moving it around and going to the postal service to do that, and I will certainly try to come up with another solution to, to keep the mailboxes on that side.
And it's a valid point about the, the mail person has to go in and out, so
Sure, absolutely.
So that's a valid
So it's, it's just a matter of, you know, in this very moment to, to have all the answers, unfortunately I don't have them all, but certainly not saying going forward if I have the leeway to make some of these decisions.
Right now
If they don't touch it, and construction is good, and so
And I'm very sympathetic to, you know, you had a subdivision or development go in, fine, number of houses, you've been there a long time, you take the quarter quote brunt of it, and all you're asking is one thing, can you just leave my mailbox open?
Right.
That's all you're asking, is that right?
And it's nice that
With that said, I, I really want my mailbox to stay where it is, and I'm very serious about, the Wiles couldn't come today or they would be here, because their mailbox being moved across the street is more dangerous than my mailbox. And it's really, it's just, it's not, it's not a good thing for the town, it's not a good thing, it's just not a good thing. It shouldn't even be considered, that's two mailboxes. And, and you know what, if I have to go to the side of my lawn to do my mail, that's fine, but it would look kind of stupid, and I don't see why we couldn't just put the mailbox where it is, or back it up a little, or whatever you have to do to make it happen.
Go ahead, Joe.
I just want to say that, I mean, obviously I'm one of the people in the world who've seen, like even on Route 140, the mailboxes are stuck right in the cement, and naturally, you couldn't get a wheelchair past it in the way it's set in some cases. But in this particular case, how many mailboxes are you talking, a couple on Cleveland, and how many on the
Eight.
One, two, three, four.
Two on Cleveland and eight on
But we really have like three that are an issue.
There's only a couple, two
I think it's a nine total.
That would be of an issue with the sidewalk placement, if it was hugging the curb?
Excuse me?
It would be, those, nine would be an issue if you're hugging the curb.
The issue really is the, is the post, so you have to, you really, obviously I'm going to talk to my friend at the postal service again and see if he has an issue with that, I think, you know, he seems like a realistic individual, so I'm hoping that that conversation will go as well as the one I had today. But when you start to look at the dimensions, in order to get the mailbox off far enough so that, say a plow doesn't hit it, it's, the, the post itself has to be recessed another, say 18 inches, and now you're smack dab in the middle of the sidewalk.
Right.
So it's, it's really a mathematics dimensional problem, and
Would there be any chance, though, that we could, again, meander it, meaning, like, create, create like a bowl around each of the mailboxes that's appropriate kind of curve, not tight to, no, not like that, but more of an appropriate look around each, because it'll be a little
Mailbox island.
Yeah, a little mailbox island for them.
I'm not saying it's out of the question, just knowing what that'll impact, at this sitting here tonight, I don't know.
Yeah.
So I hate to say yes, and then, and then, you know
And it might be different with each resident.
Fire hydrant or something crazy in the way. But yeah, I don't see why something like that isn't realistic as long as, you know, as an insane
The main objective for tonight, let me just interject for you.
Yeah, let's get back to it.
I was going to call the question.
Needs leeway to do a design.
We forgot. Is that we need leeway to do the design, because the design as permitted with those specifications would have significant impact on the people of Village Green and Cleveland Street. So tonight is, we need to have the ability to make some changes to, based on field conditions. That's really the big picture on this whole thing.
Is there, but the town's going to inherit the sidewalk.
Yes.
Right. So, I mean, the one, I don't mean to be like
I will inherit it.
I, I don't mean to mess with your mojo here, because conceptually, like, I agree, like, I don't modify this, this was a one size fits all, done during permitting, made every, it sounded good in theory, doesn't work in practice kind of thing, I don't have any issue with that. I do have a little bit of an issue with field correction for a sidewalk that the town is going to inherit, because I do know that there are going to be, like, I don't want you to touch their mailboxes. If their mailbox, let me be clear, this is not unreasonable, don't touch their mailboxes, but if you, I don't also want to see a field correction where the town inherits a sidewalk that is deficient per ADA standards, and the developer didn't go for the, didn't actually do the work to go to AAB and deal with it. So what I would rather see is you, yes, have flexibility and design a realistic sidewalk, but before construction, that need, I think it should come in on a plan, and the folks on Village Green should have a pretty reasonable idea where things are going to be. I know that things are being staked, so I'm pretty sure you're like ready to rock on this, and what I am saying is not music to your ears, and I understand that, and I feel sorry about that, but I think it makes more sense because it will be a public asset, just to know what we are inheriting, just with accessibility, because while we know of lots of old sidewalks where we see the mailboxes dug in and that sort of thing, it's not legal, and this, and we do have a federal obligation to fix it.
I wasn't promoting that as a solution.
I, I don't think that you were because you're a, but I don't think that you were, but that's the one thing that I'd rather, I'd rather see you actually like figure it out and figure out
From my perspective, I'm here from the town because those sidewalks will eventually, I'm the one that has to maintain them and, and
Right.
And look after them going forward, it's Mr. DePlacido that
Right, right, I don't know why
Essentially, he has to do what I'm asking him to do.
And I like, and I concur, generally, I like to see something come back to the board, and that'll do a few things. These ladies, I, I support their concern, and, and I support your position because you're stuck in between all of this, but, but by our final decision, I think you'll have cover. Hey, that's what the board voted, that's what I'm stuck with doing. We, as a board, we want to do what we can to keep this, to keep this, these mailboxes where they are, and I don't want to hold up a project, I, I just think this, and I think it gives everyone cover. If there's a, we'll know the final outcome, it won't be an on-the-ground decision, we'll see it before, you're protecting, hey, that's, whatever, those are the orders, I got to do it. So it will come back on our, on us to make a decision.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right over Tom in my view. That doesn't make sense to you.
And I think beyond the mailboxes, I think, I think, at least I would vote in favor of yes, field decisions out there, because in my view, they're minor, and you'll have that, in my view, I think the board would vote in favor of that, it's just a mailbox issue, we want an affirmative
Yeah. As long as, as long as it's wide enough, get down with your bad self, see what makes sense.
Is it worth asking Tom if he's come up with any ideas about these things?
Well, we, we did have, we, we were on the field with him, I think the one thing I want to say, though, is that within that permit, there is a trigger to get this done by a certain occupancy permit, so, I don't know, Tom, you want to?
Yeah, Tom, you're stuck in the middle on this, so if you happen to, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, we were looking to get this done in the next couple of weeks, at least put the binder course of pavement down, get it graded and things with that, and pretty much have this wrapped up, you know, before the kids go back to school and stuff, so, you know, sometime August, and then put a top, put, actually put the top course in the sidewalk in, probably in September, just to let the binder course sit for, you know, a couple of months. But we're trying to get the majority of the heavy work done, which is really, you know, grind the road and put a binder course down, and prep for where the sidewalk is going to be, you know, probably the next, you know, month, sometime in July and August here, to get that done.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know if this is going to be, Blair, you could speak to this, I, I don't know if this is going to be a major change to where the sidewalk's going to be, other than the three foot strip's not going to be there, I think it's really a combination of the mailboxes.
Right, yeah, at this point, I think that's where we're at, I think everything, obviously for the most part, that we've discussed here tonight, with the only change being just trying to be, use a little imagination here to get around the mailbox issue, which, at the end of the day, I've had harder problems to tackle, so I, I don't see that really being a massive killer here, so I think going forward, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we could do if, if I have the authority to oversee the prep work at least.
Where it's wider, do you still plan to use some grass strips, or is the plan for the sidewalk just to be
We'd like to try to stay as close to the road as possible, as much as possible.
So that the cars expect it?
Right.
Okay.
So with the curb, and then, and then the sidewalk, and if we get, as we approach each mailbox, to, you know, we'll get imaginative there and give enough space, I'd like to try to give enough space so if we have to replace, say, a snowplow hits a mailbox, it breaks the post off, which is unheard of, but, but, you know, if that were to happen, then obviously I'd like to be able to replace the post without having to jackhammer the sidewalk up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sidewalks.
Usually you can put a pipe in there or something.
I mean, you could put a tree ring in there, but even that takes up a lot of space, so, you know, probably 12 to 18 inches in that area, just to give yourself enough room to
And I'm receptive, and I'm receptive to Mr. DePlacido's, you know, he wants to get this done before, before Labor Day for school and things like that, so we, I think we're all, everybody wants that. So I think for tonight, I, I think the, the question for the board is to authorize Blair some leeway to go forward on, on this, so that the developer continue forward, and yet to come back to us specifically with the, how they're going to address the mailboxes. And until that, let's not, let's not finalize the mailbox sidewalk piece of it.
Yeah, because at this point, that's really the only piece that's really affected, the rest, everything else, for all intents and purposes, is the same, really, right, it's
Sounds great, doing a great job.
Because if we can leave them alone, we can verify the widths of, you know, what the sidewalk would actually be, we'll know whether or not there's any problem, he can proceed with construction at risk, if he needs to apply for additional permits and beg AAB for forgiveness, that's kind of your problem. But you can say on your construction schedule, and then I think it all works.
And I would like him to get the base course down and to let that sit for a little while
Yeah.
Before we come across it with the top, I'd hate to do it back to back, and obviously as the summer window closes, that timing becomes an issue, so if we, you know, if we had the ability to, to get that piece of it.
Thank you.
It's like there's a way to cover all the bases.
I think that, you know, some dialogue back and forth, me directly with residents as we move forward, and, you know, it's, it's not like we're talking about 100, it's a, it's a handful, so
You think that'll work, Tom?
Unsurmountable.
And do you think there's just a way to just not touch them at all?
Possibly, yeah, I mean, I, I think that, you know
Have you been hitting them so far, the mailboxes?
Well, you just said that.
I've never been hit, but I've never won the lottery either, so
You know, there's going to be a target.
I'm going to recognize Joe.
Yeah, it's one, there was a neighbor's other mailbox location mentioned here, right?
The Wiles, they're on Cleveland Street.
If we're doing this, is there a chance we can accommodate that one too possibly?
Yes, I think that that, I mean, if we're, if
We're not going to leave them out.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I think to say let's leave them out after this type of a discussion, when it seems like we're doing it to all the other ones.
I just want to
No, just the Wiles.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just, no, just
Fire hydrant. What will happen to the fire hydrant? That's at the corner of my property.
The fire hydrant should, with this modification, the fire hydrant should be able to stay, And that was all part of it because if it goes back, if we went with the grass strip and then the sidewalk, I would actually have to dig up the fire hydrant and move it back out of. So, so that's another cost. Another cost that, right, that we don't have to incur by losing the grass sidewalk. Right, oh, it's very close.
You don't know if you can get out there.
There's a lot of, it's a tight spot.
Yes.
It really is, so I appreciate.
To Mr. DePlacido, is this what you're hearing tonight? I, I just want to hear your concerns on this.
My, my concerns is just that, so we can move forward and that the DPW is given the ability so that if we come across problems in the field, then I can get a decision as we're working out there and not have to wait to the next ZBA meeting.
Okay, understood, thank you. Alain, is there anybody else, anybody in the audience or anybody on Zoom that we haven't recognized yet who'd like to speak towards this?
I do not see anyone.
Okay.
No, no one's raising their hands, everything's.
All right. Do we want to make a motion on this?
I'm trying to make sure we formulate it properly. I'll make a motion that we look to see the revised plan for the sidewalk, yandering around the existing mailboxes.
Well, I think we just.
I think we can.
I think we can, I think you can say, yeah.
This is what he's looking for.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Absolutely, you can, I think you can read that right in there and just add that the mailboxes stay in the locations they are to the best of their ability.
Want to read this?
Yeah.
We can make a motion that way.
Yeah, exactly.
That's the right.
On this one, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight.
Right.
You're very helpful.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we, that we allow the zone, the, the ZBA allows the DPW director the flexibility to make decisions, alterations to both the sidewalk projects with, to both, oh, to this sidewalk. We were talking about one at a time or both?
You can do both.
This doesn't, this doesn't apply to.
Just this one, I thought you meant both streets.
All right. So I make a motion, we give the DPW director the flexibility to make alterations to the sidewalk project on Village Green, which will minimize impacts of residential properties and existing infrastructures, including mailboxes, in order for the developer to construct the sidewalks within DPW specifications while minimizing our town expenditures. Need a second? In the same thing?
Don't move the boxes.
The word mailboxes.
I said mailboxes, I said.
That's what I'm saying, Dave.
That's all.
It's in there.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, we'll do a roll call vote.
Joe Sebastian, aye.
Tim Martin, aye.
David Axlerberg, aye.
Chris McKev, aye.
And Josephine?
Uh, she is.
Do we lose her? We have four anyway.
I think she dropped out.
All right, we got four.
I don't see her out there.
We got four.
We have four.
Give her one more chance if she's there. Josephine, are you there?
No, I don't see her.
She's not there.
I need to take the phone number.
Okay.
Yeah, she used to have dropped.
There's four.
Okay.
She was in the hospital with her father, so.
Oh, sorry.
I hope everything's going all right. Thank you again, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you see Jake and Maggie, tell them, say hi.
I will, I'll be speaking later.
They have my cats.
Have a good evening.
All right, so my, so their cats were my kittens. So they, they, they took them. My barn cat had a couple cats and kittens.
So next we have another appointment with Mr. DePlacido. It's also on a sidewalk issue, but it's a different development. And if Mr. DePlacido's there, I'd have him introduce.
This one's crazy.
And so, and the project and what we're looking at.
This was at town meeting.
Once again, Tom DePlacido, and I'm here in this time behalf of Abbeyville Development LLC and Wade's Crossing. And basically the same request, this, that the DPW is given the ability to make field conditions when work is eventually commenced in the sidewalk in that area. And potentially as we may do the water main. The water main is going to start in July on Lawrence Street. And moving forward with that, the, the sidewalk is not as precedent as an issue on this one here because I believe there's still some concerns about some takings and easements and other things. So not as much of a concern here, but it would be good to have a direction, at least where we're going with it. So basically the same, you know, request, the DPW is asking that they have this ability to make these decisions in the field. And I'm just concurring with that and, and I have no issue with it. And just want to work with the town to get things done.
Thank you very much. So before you ask your question, I want to get a little more background, maybe, I don't know if I should go to Rich or Blair on this one, but if you want to give us, there's a little more.
There's a little more. This is the one that was at town meeting, correct?
Correct, so if you want to give us.
There's a little more, they're both substance, but there's a lot more to this one than the previous one, so. So I put some bullet points on the first slide, just to kind of give you a progression of things and where things were, where they were and where we're at today. So let's see, the comprehensive permit for Wade's Crossing was approved in 2020, which originally was Abbeyville for the people who were involved through that permitting process, which originally was a much larger project and was reduced down to just the Mr. LaRusso's property off of Lawrence Street. As part of the, as part of the approval for what was Abbeyville, which is now Wade Crossing, there was a sidewalk that was specified in the permit to go on the north side of Lawrence Street from Wade's Crossing, which is the development, down to, interestingly enough, Kernberry Metal Road. And it should, it actually did not specify down to the causeway. So it actually had a gap, but anyway, that's, that's not a major. Yeah, that was kind of an oversight, but anyway, so that's not.
Is there a plan you could put up while you walk us through this?
Yeah, I'm going to put up a plan, but I just want to go through and then I'll go back and forth. So, so anyway, the, as I was saying, there were some trigger points within the permit in terms of sidewalk plan being developed, presented to the town, and getting feedback whether the plan was acceptable. And I know as the residents follow along through the process, there was a mutual agreement between, well, particularly the developer, that, you know, things were outside the 60-day window, but we were commencing with developing the sidewalk plan. So that was not a critical benchmark within the permit that it wouldn't fail to proceed with the, with the project. As part of the comprehensive permit, there was a requirement for easements to be taken by the town Norfolk in order to construct the sidewalk. The easements were a combination of construction easements and permanent easements. In May of last year, 2020, 2022, excuse me, the town appropriated the money to have the appraisals done. The appraisals commenced in August and went all the way through to March because it was changes that needed to be done in terms of the plan work in order to come up with a valuation for the easements. The easements, the valuation, and this was right up until the last, right up to town meeting, that the numbers came in. So in terms of when the numbers came in, the total cost for the easements between construction and permanent easements was $55,000. So that's the dollar amount. Town meeting did not vote and authorize the expenditure of the money in order to obtain those easements.
And just kind of interject that those dollar amounts were not accepted by anybody on the private side yet.
They were not. They were shared with some of the property owners. There were, there were, they were shared with all the property owners via email except for one. One of the residents did have concerns with the value of the easement being too low. And so as part of that process, we weren't even to the point where, whether it was compensation or mitigation restoration work, we didn't even get to that point. Unfortunately, town meeting didn't approve the funding. Understanding the, the intent and purpose of the sidewalk for Lawrence Street, we're here to discuss a modified proposal, which was some, there was language within the comprehensive permit to do that. So I'm going to just.
So we don't have the funding for the easements for Lawrence Street regardless? So that, that's where we, that's our starting point tonight.
Starting point tonight. So it's for the easements that we don't have the funding for? But if we do modifications.
Which we're going to get.
Field modifications, will that avoid?
Correct.
That's, that's the question.
That's where we're going.
So that, that's.
You got it.
That's the next part of the conversation. Okay.
Thank you, that segue.
Okay, good. So this is more of an illustrative schematic, it's not design level plans. But the idea is to approach the sidewalk in phases. The green phase, so the green would, would go to the causeway, which is in yellow on the top of the screen over here. And then it would remain on the north side of Lawrence Street as it comes up. And then it would cross over to the south side, which is shown here in green. Now.
Can you walk through that again? It might be, it's tough, I know it, but it's tough for me to see and maybe it was tough for others if you can walk through it again.
So you come.
Causeway's on the right, right, so the bridges?
Yep.
The bridge is right here at the top of the screen.
Which has a sidewalk.
Where the sidewalk is.
Yep.
So you're connecting to that sidewalk? Connecting to the sidewalk.
Yep.
Come up along Lawrence Street on that same side.
Right.
And then we get in this area here on Lawrence Street is to put a crosswalk in to cross Lawrence Street to put a sidewalk on the south side. So there'll be a crosswalk there. And then go along Lawrence Street to connect with the sidewalk on Eagle Drive.
So just on, just stop there for one second. So on that piece that you just walked us through.
Yeah.
Are there any proposed changes or modifications from what was planned before?
There is. So the, this, this proposal be within the layout.
Correct.
Go right ahead, Blair, if you want to walk us.
Okay. So again, you know, as, as these projects are complicated, part of the issue with this entire piece is that the road over the years has migrated and is not sitting in the center of the right of way. And that's where we end up with a problem. And it, and it goes from being right up against one side of the right of way to, you know, 300 feet down, being up against the other side of the right of way. And it's a little difficult to see on this satellite photo, but we're trying to mitigate that problem as best we can. So the good news is that going up the hill from the causeway, the right-hand side, there is space there within the right of way to go all the way to the top of the hill. At the top of the hill on the right-hand side is Old Lawrence Street or Old Lawrence Road right there. That, what used to be the road many, many years ago. That intersection there with those couple houses are down there would need to be squared up. And we would do that when we come up with the sidewalk to make sure the transition works. Now there's a, there will be a hydrant in that area. So there'll be a little bit of work that needs to be done there. And originally, the way we had designed it, if we had the easements, would have been to stay on the north side of the road all the way, the entire project.
Okay.
But because of the easements beyond Eagle Drive, we, that we don't have, at that point, so now I'm just trying to stay within our rights, within the right of way. So that's why when we get to Old Lawrence Street, just beyond it, I'd like to cross the street to stay within the right of way. And then that would bring us up and connect us with the existing sidewalk that's on Eagle Drive. And so by a roundabout way, it does connect the entire sidewalk system together, allows us to stay within the right of way, allows us to put in fire hydrants to what we need to do. We're also going to put, as we put the water system up through there, then we're going to put connections for the lots and possible houses that may someday end up hooking up to it. And so there's a lot of benefit to doing this phase first, and then we can continue to work on the easements. And if, if Buckley Man or whatever happens in the future, then obviously there's another avenue maybe to finish it off on the north side.
Yeah, so, so because it's like two or three parts to this, maybe we can just focus on this piece first before we get to the whole thing, because we might get off track. So what I'd like to do on this first piece is just, and not to exclude anything else, we'll get to all of it and then we'll tie it all together at the end. Is just open it up to the board if you have any questions on the first piece of this.
On the green.
On the green. So really because like Blair outlined.
Makes sense.
Because of the way the road got laid out and, you know, the, you don't have the room unless you're going to spend big money to get easements.
So there's no easements needed if you do it this way.
There you go.
Good job.
And this include any sort of a grass strip in there too? Yes or no? Where you would, not on the, not on.
The issue that, and again, back to making infield easements. As you climb the hill here, and we don't really have any idea what the soil is like there, but I suspect that as we put the water line up the middle of the road, there's every indication that that whole hill is nothing but solid ledge. So hence the need to be able to make some infield adjustments. I, at this point, until we dig up through there, I don't have any idea how that's going to work.
Right.
Okay.
You know, I, I would like to do that, but if, if it gets to a point where the ground is solid ledge and we would have to blast and, you know, it would be nice to have the authority to be able to.
Okay.
So it may or not have some grass strip is what you're saying.
As a practical matter though, that section, there's no homes there that we're talking about too, so.
Yeah, I wasn't worried about so much there. I was saying, once you get to the homes though, I know it's only a small section so far before we talk about the red or it, but I just didn't know the initial goal was to see if you could do a grass strip or not? Or obviously flexibility says you may have the choice of not being able to do a grass strip.
Right, my thought would be that, you know, the piece to, in my mind in question, which I don't have the answer to unfortunately, is between the causeway and the top of the hill where Old Lawrence Street is. Once the road crosses there, I believe there's plenty of room for a grass strip all the way to Eagle Drive. It's flat, it should be insignificant. The real issue is going to be that first initial piece, just because it's unknown and.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good hill.
Yep.
Yeah, I have no idea what that is going to look like when we put a shovel in the ground, so.
Good. So before we go on, if there's anybody in the audience here or on Zoom.
There's definitely people on Zoom.
We're done with people on Zoom? All right, so if anybody comes back, let me know.
No, no, there are people on Zoom.
Oh, there are, oh, there are.
No, no, definitely, so.
I thought so, okay, great.
So I'll stop sharing so you can see people.
Anybody on Zoom?
How about the audience, anybody in the audience?
Or anybody in the audience here?
Well, definitely.
Did I mishear something? Did you say there was no footpaths on the causeway itself?
No, there's a, there's a sidewalk. There's a boardwalk.
There's a boardwalk.
There's a boardwalk, right, or something. I remember seeing them fishing there, right?
Yeah.
So we're not, we're not making a road, a footpath to nowhere is what I'm getting.
Correct.
Good.
It's essentially a continuation, a continuation of that up the hill.
Okay, so we do have a lot of folks on Zoom, great. So if anybody on Zoom, on that particular piece of it, we'll get to all of it again. Or anybody in the audience has any questions or comments on that piece of it, we'd be happy to recognize you.
Leo's got a hand raised.
Leo.
Okay.
How you doing, Leo Vodar, I live at 28 Lawrence Street. Did I hear correctly, we're going to authorize potential, a field decision to be made on blasting if there's ledge there?
No, he's saying that he definitely does not want to blast ledge and the field decision would be to avoid blasting. It's a rocky hill, he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to blow up the hill.
And you can, Blair's right here, you can, you can confirm that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, so it's, we're not blasting.
No, we're not.
No, no.
Second question, just, just a curiosity question. Why haven't we done test pits to see what the soil conditions are before this meeting? Just, if you're that worried about ledge, I would expect some kind of test pits or geotech study. That's all I got, thank you.
I think the second question, and I may have to go back to you, was why didn't we do, why didn't we do soil samples prior to the plan approval or before tonight? Is that the question?
Yeah, it's, you know, there's a lot, it's just a curiosity question. There's a lot of concerns about what's underneath the roads and everything. I was just wondering why we haven't done some test pits or, you know, geotech studies and drilling just to see if there is ledge there. Might have made life a little bit easier now, that's all.
Blair, if you have a comment on that, I, I specifically don't, I don't think we typically do that.
Right, we don't typically do that, I.
It's a fair question, I don't dismiss the question.
I mean, in Buckley Man, obviously there's signs in spots where there's no vegetation and where it's sandy soil and gravel. Tommy could certainly.
Mr. DePlacido may have done a lot of soil samples out there over the years.
I'm sure that he's done more than his fair share around, up around. And as, you know, I try not to dig up the road more than it's dug up already. So I haven't, I haven't done any excavation in the street.
But I don't think the town typically would do that for this type of a project. But it's a fair, it's a fair question. I'm sure the developer has done his research out there over the years.
And in, in reality, what we're discussing tonight is to be able to give them the ability to do field changes to that so that they can avoid.
Hazard.
Hazards that come up. Whether that be ledge or whatever, a tree or anything, so.
Correct.
Sinkhole.
Right. Like if I have to move a fire hydrant, let's say because I run into something that I can't move or whatever, just to be able to deviate from the plan to obviously save money and do what's best.
But the big thing is that we're still trying to get a sidewalk where it was not approved at town meeting. We're trying to do it still with, within the criteria.
Right.
That is allowed.
Could save, saves the town money too.
Right.
Yeah, saves the town $55,000. $55,000 for one stick of dynamite probably. I was just joking, sorry.
Okay.
We have another one. Karen. Karen McCabe.
Karen McCabe? Karen McCabe?
Yeah, hi. It's Karen McCabe, 26 Lawrence Street.
Welcome.
According to the green line.
Yep.
The only house impacted. I have a few questions on it, because we currently take care of that lawn. We currently have sprinkler system there and, and, you know, a few other things. What will be done to our lawn? Will our sprinkler system then be fixed and brought back, however many feet you're taking? What, what will happen?
So, the sprink, because it's in the right-of-way, the sprinkler system shouldn't be there. Obviously, we'll try to do what we can to mitigate that as best as we can when we go through the process, but there shouldn't, we have irrigation systems throughout town that are within the right-of-way, and they do get hit by plows and get torn up from time to time. We do what we can to help those, those homeowners, but at, at the end of the day, they shouldn't be there.
Okay. So, I'm not supposed to take care of the, the first part of my lawn and just let it be, right?
Okay.
The, um, the, the next part is, is about drainage, right? When the town put in the, the top coat of the street years back, I did not have a puddle at the end of my driveway. Now, you can, on rainy days, you could possibly take a small boat at the end of my driveway. Will that be rectified by this?
Yeah. So, the plan is that, once the water line is put up through there, we will patch that trough, as it were, all the way up through, let that sit for a while. It could be months, depends on what the contracting schedule looks like. And then, we will deal with all drainage issues. There is some catch basin work that needs to be done. There is other work that needs to be done up through there, but we will certainly address that, Karen.
Blair, were you, were you, are you particularly, did you have knowledge about that particular issue in front of their home?
No, but that's standard for whenever we do any of these roads throughout town. We look at, we go up through on a rainy day and take video and, and take a look, just so that we can address those when we actually tear the road up.
Okay. Karen, did you have any other questions or concerns?
I did, I did. Obviously, my mailbox is there. We had that in, in our discussion with the previous people about a mailbox. I did not hear what the limitations of this sidewalk is, but, so, where would my, how would my mailbox be impacted?
I don't believe that your mailbox will be impacted. The cross, the pedestrian crosswalk would be to the southwest side of that second driveway that comes out right there, so it shouldn't, shouldn't impact your mailbox.
I, I, then the, then the chart's not drawn correctly. My, it goes, or can you bring it back up?
Are you talking about the image with the green line?
Yes.
That's not to scale. That's just like a stand-in for, for concept.
When are we gonna get one that, when are we gonna get one that actually is to scale?
Plan. We're, we're possibly approving field recommendations, so you most likely won't get a plan until an as-built is done, if there is one done at that point.
Can we put in the same criteria that we did with the other group?
What, that your mailbox, your mailbox will be still in the same spot?
Well, at least not across the street.
Blair, I, I don't wanna make that tonight unless we know that that's what we can commit to.
Yeah, and to be, and to be honest...
But we're given a free-for-all.
Right.
And, you know...
No, I agree with that.
We know the history.
Yeah, I just wanna hear from the director to see if he's had a chance to look at those particular mailboxes. I don't know.
Right. That particular mailbox, off my memory, probably isn't that good to, to tell you yes or no. Obviously, I would try to do the same thing that I'm doing in Village Green and not move anything that I don't have to. So, you know, if there's any way possible I can get around it, then I certainly will.
Yeah. I don't, I'm not going to cross the street, so I'm in the same boat as those other people. But it's either, even if it's drawn to incorrect scale, it's either my mailbox or the people in the driveway, 45's mailbox. So, it's one or the other. So, if it stays on the other side, 45, it would, might, it could be moved over maybe after the sidewalk crosses or whatever. But I think we, I'm just requesting the board to put in a similar nada, carte blanche, do what you want, because, because, you know, we don't have a, for scale, and there's no sticks in the ground just yet, like the other one.
I would say the only difference here is, though, is on that side of the road, there will be a grass strip. So, there will be space there.
But...
You have extremely different site conditions, is what he's trying to say to you, that that would lead to your mailbox being completely un-impacted because there's enough width there. The issue that we had on the other cases, they were cheek-to-jaw with a stone wall. And so, you have different site conditions.
So, maybe the board would entertain, because everyone feels generally comfortable with it, that we could, if we vote favorably to give, to give the DPW director the authority to do field modifications, other than move mailboxes without the board's approval. It may be irrelevant to him, and that's fine, and the board could, could look at it that way.
Exactly. That's what I'm getting at.
Yep.
Because, right now, they're talking about having all this stuff. They get there, there's a rock and they don't wanna blast, and now it's a 10-foot, 5-foot of this and 3 feet of that, now it's down to 3 feet. But you have all approval, who cares, and it's done. That's what I'm getting at. If it doesn't matter, put it in and it doesn't matter. It's a moot point in the long run. So, thank you.
I'm not suggesting that the board, that we made a motion that the mailbox may never move. I'm just suggesting maybe the board would vote, so that if it were to be moved, he has to specifically get our approval for it.
I agree with you on that.
I concur.
And you'd be comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Now, is there anybody else on Zoom or in the audience? Quite a few folks. We wanna hear from everybody.
Oh, Leo's got his hand back up again.
Should we take new comments first instead of follow-ups?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we wait on the follow-ups, because we have quite a few, Leo. We'll give everybody a chance, and then we'll come back.
What was Leo saying?
So, if anybody else, we haven't heard from yet.
Would you?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. I didn't know. I thought he was talking to the...
No, anybody, just identify yourself.
I'm Mark Polly. I'm 14 Lawrence Street. So, if you pull the map back up, I'm like the first house in the green there. So, you know, just one, I was kinda glad to see that the whole sidewalk didn't move on to the south side, just because specifically in front of my property, there's a fire hydrant, two telephone poles, and the mailbox. So, you know, I guess the question I had was more like, the, the original comprehensive permit said that when the water was run, we'd also be doing the sidewalk. Does that apply for what's in the green, or is that, because I thought I heard Tom at the beginning of the meeting say the water was gonna be run in July. Is the sidewalk also gonna be done in that period, or is that decoupled now?
I think that's why we're here tonight.
Got it.
To give field, if, if we don't give these field options, then they need to come up with a plan and everything else. It's gonna prolong the sidewalk.
Got it.
We'd like to have the sidewalk done at the same time and get it all done. By giving these modifications, we'll be able to do that.
Got it. Okay. That makes sense.
Okay.
I think that's all I have.
My thought was if they're, they're digging the water line, why not prep for the sidewalk at the same time you're going up the hill?
Right.
Helps with traffic and everything.
That was what the original comprehensive permit said, so.
Yep. Good. But we, but at town meeting, when they rejected the, that kinda put a little stick in the wicket, and so that's why we're here tonight.
Right. I was just...
Yep.
The green, with the exception of the very little bit at the end in front of Karen's house, like, is still the original plan, right, to run out on the north side?
Yeah, it is.
So, that's where I was kinda like, is that actually gonna happen in parallel with the water? Because it's not really a change.
Yep.
So, the, just to clarify, though, it's the, the prepping for the sidewalk will happen...
Got it.
With the water line, but the actual sidewalk is, is further out in terms of construction and that.
But yeah, the start of the construction of the sidewalk would potentially happen. Okay.
If, if I could interject...
Go ahead.
To Tom DePlacido here, is that, basically, we put in the water line on the side of the road coming up, and actually in the road, probably a few feet from the gutter line coming up with that. But right now, even where the green is, in front of the Buckley Mann property, I still think there's slope easements and temporary easements that are needed in that area to do the sidewalk. So, I, I actually can't prep for the sidewalk in that area quite yet, so hopefully that'll be resolved.
Okay.
Sandy. Sandy?
Oh, yeah. I, I can't see, so if you can help me out.
Ashley MacArthur, or Sandy's iPhone?
Yeah.
Okay, I see him now. Is that Sandy's iPhone or Ashley? Have their hands up?
Ashley?
Ashley? Just identify yourself.
Hey, can, I'm trying to go on camera for respect for you all. Awesome. Ash MacArthur, 51 Lawrence Street. I have been bought into the property and wanna say, you know, I wanna first thank Rich McCarthy. I know he's worked hard because we were part of the meeting, and the first part was to affect our property. I like the new layout. I think this is a way to, A, save the town money. The one question I had, I heard something, and I know there's in the works with potentially another development with the Buckley Mann property. Could that potentially change this sidewalk layout to then go to the other side of the street?
I'm not, which you can speak to it, but I don't think that would impact the green area.
We're in the red area now, so...
So, we'll get to that.
It doesn't affect our, we're 51 Lawrence, so the frontage of us are now not affected and no easement needed.
Ash, if you don't mind, we'll just hold on the red for a moment, and then we'll come back to it. Is that okay?
I got you.
Yeah, we'll come back to you for questions on that.
All right. Let me lower my hand, but overall, I think that this is definitely a way around of getting the sidewalk, and it looks, it's good. We walk the road three times a day at least, and that puts the sidewalk on last of the blind side by straightening the road that may correct for it. But that's the side we walk up and then cross over to our property. So, crosswalks and the sidewalk are all in favor, and some we've all wanted. So, good job.
I think this is the easy piece of this project, so we'll get to the more difficult so I hope you have that in your favor in mind in 20 minutes.
When we, when we did the easements at town meeting, did we do it for red, yellow, or for red and green, or just green, or?
I think...
It was, it was just the north side, so...
So, just straight across the north side?
Yeah.
So, including the area now known as the red area on the north side? Or was it just...
It was that red area. Yeah, it was.
So, like all five houses or whatever on the other side? Okay.
Yeah, there's, Ash's property, 49, all the way down.
Okay.
And we have, we have Sandy with a hand up. Sandy, if you could identify yourself?
Hi. Yes, this is Sandy from 8 Eric Road, and I just wanted to find out for sure. So, did the town actually vote to not do the funds, or was the motion withdrawn?
We have somebody in the audience that can address that, I believe?
Donna Jones, as an attendee of town meeting, the advisory board, as Rich said, they were trying to get an estimate, and they believed guessed under 20,000, and the actual cost came just, like, within days of town meeting. And so, the advisory board had been in favor of this, but once they heard the 55,000, the advisory board recommended the town not pay that amount at this time, and the town meeting attendees agreed with them.
So, that was a no vote?
It was a no vote.
A vote by the 60 or 70 voters that attended the May town meeting.
So, it was, the answer was at town meeting, it was, it was voted down?
Yeah. I, this is Karen. I was there too with the recommendation from Rich McCarthy, because he got feedback from, my understanding was, he recommended because he spoke to one or two neighbors and they weren't going to agree. But I don't know, Rich maybe can give more insight into that.
We, we actually didn't even get to that point, Karen, at town meeting.
I think town meeting voted it down. We don't have the funds, so we, I think we've got a plan here that don't require those funds, and, and we've got a development.
No, at town meeting, it was recommended by, it was recommended to be withdrawn, I believe, or something like that. It was not withdrawn, but recommended to be voted no.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what the advisory board would have done. They would have made a recommendation because of the change.
Right.
But it went to the floor and it was a vote.
It went to the floor and it was unanimous, actually.
It was voted that way.
Not unanimous.
It wasn't unanimous, because I didn't vote for it, but that's beside the point.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It went, it went to a yes. It was not unanimous.
I wanted to get it done.
No, it wasn't unanimous, but it was voted down.
It was voted down. It was, yeah. It was overwhelmingly no.
So, here we are, and we're working around it, and we have some, I think, at least on the green section, some, you know, I understand your concern about your mailbox and sprinkler system and so forth, but...
I'm still, I'm still fine with getting a sidewalk.
Okay. Good. Great. Now, we had some other hands up, I believe.
Sandy. Was Sandy done?
Oh, Sandy.
Sandy. That was Sandy.
That was Sandy.
And then Karen came in, so...
That was Karen.
No.
Sandy, did you have more questions?
Do you have any more questions?
Because your hands up.
No, I'm gonna lower my hand. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience, or from Mr. DePlacido, or anybody on Zoom? We're gonna get to the other pieces of this in a moment, so you may have questions on the other pieces, but we can move on from the green area right now?
Yep. If we could bring those.
Yeah.
Picture back up.
Picture back up.
I'll bring the picture back.
Take this in small bites. So, we're gonna move, if you wanna go on, Rich, beyond the green area now, if you don't mind?
Sure. In terms of the, what's depicted there on the, in red, the idea now is that we're calling it Phase Two. And the reason why we're calling it Phase Two is that the Buckley Mann property, which is, had been subject to potential development, is still, it is being marketed by the family to try to sell it for residential development, which in turn would be the vehicle to pay for the contamination that's on the property to clean it up. However, that hasn't, it, it was under agreement, it fell out of agreement. There is no agreement in place right now, so the predictability of where that's gonna land is very unknown at this time. I will say for tonight, for some of the residents there, that at the August planning board meeting, representatives from the Mann family are gonna wanna have a discussion with the planning board in terms of potentially looking at ways that maybe it could be a bylaw change or something that could be considered, which then may be a vehicle to get the property sold in order to get the property cleaned up. So, it's, it's extremely unknown, the, the future of that property. And that property came into play particularly with the north side of the sidewalk, because the hill was gonna be cut back significantly, which was gonna affect at least the appearance. And then also, Ash's property, which is at 51, and his wife, and so because the unvariability of it, decided to just pause on that section. That is the same section where Lawrence Street is outside the right-of-way onto the south side. So, if and when the Buckley Mann property potentially gets developed, it'll be the time to kind of assess how to go about doing that. If Buckley Mann property is developed, it could very well and most likely have sidewalks throughout that whole entire development. So, there may not even be a need for a sidewalk in that section, because the residents who right there could utilize the sidewalks in a new development, and that segment might not be needed at all in terms of sidewalk, but make roadway improvements. But it's really, we can't plan on the variability of this. We, we really...
We don't know. We don't know.
And that could be many, 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 many years.
It could be many years? It might not even hap, I don't, I really don't.
Exactly. From many years to none.
Well, it seems like the worst outcome, as it were, too, if that were to happen, is that we have sidewalks on both sides of the road.
Potential.
Which I can live with.
Yeah.
That's a good outcome, so it seems good.
So, that's why we're taking that out of this.
So, so, where the red is, right now, the modification proposal is no sidewalk.
No sidewalk. Now, we'll say, just for the record, as part of this, there would be a crosswalk at Brett's Farm Road across Lawrence Street to Wade's Crossing Way, I think it's, I'm not sure. It's Wade's Way? So, that way, the new residents, as they move into Wade's Crossing, will be able to cross the street onto a sidewalk. So, there will be a sidewalk, not just running along Lawrence Street.
I'd like to hear from the board, or...
Yeah. Just to recap, the, the reason, it's shown in red, but we can't do it on that side because of...
We don't have the funding to acquire the...
Well, we need, we need easements to make adjustments that fit everything. There's just, there's no room.
But the attempted town meeting was easements on which side of the road?
It was on the north side.
On the north side. Then it was on the south side, but needs all easements as well.
It would need, it would need easements to bring the road back in to the road.
Yeah, there is, there is no space on the south side, because the road is already out of the right-of-way. Technically, having to move the road to make room for the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
So, can we just, it's like, so, given that the road is migrating south, can we So can we just, it's like, so given that the road is migrating south, can we build a sidewalk where we have room?
We have, we have been, you know, looking at this 50 ways every day. Obviously, it's pedestrian, you want to minimize the amount of pedestrian crossings you have.
Right.
Right? So when you put people on one side of the road, you want to try to keep them there for as long as you can, especially when you only have sidewalk on one way. So that we get to the top of the hill in the green and we cross in front of Karen McCabe's, you know, you want to try to do that. If we get into Phase Two in the red area and we cross over Eagle Drive, then, you know, obviously, it would be great to straighten out that road, push it back into the right of way, and maybe you keep the sidewalk at that point on that side of the road as it goes down around the corner. But as it sits today geographically, and with where the road is, and with what's going on, it's just not feasible.
That is so interesting.
Well, then it gives us opportunity in terms of, like I said, with Ash's property's 51, to do a, to look at how that would integrate. And so it's to minimize that impact, because essentially, if we, this plan would have taken down the hill, and it would have, it's not just him, but that section would have been changed significantly. So.
When this was originally permitted, the idea that the developers on the hook for is through the red segment.
Correct.
So we want to, we want to take the red segment off the table for the time being, because we have issues galore with that, that are on our side and not his. And then on the green side, we have an elegant solution to deal with issues that we also cause, correct?
Yeah, we can.
We are cool to do business with.
Good question.
I don't know how to describe it. I like to summarize it.
I get that the minor change would be doing to his piece of it, to the actual development, not the offsite work. You can make that argument.
Does he turn into Franklin?
It's not Franklin. It doesn't get to Franklin.
That's a condition.
It's a condition.
Going to have a hand up, guys.
Yep.
Wavering. Is that a major?
Tim, have a hand up.
I'm sorry.
Karen.
Karen, you have a question for us?
Yeah, I did have another question on this red part. I held it for the red part. I know before you said it was the, I don't know the dimensions, the grass strip and then the sidewalk. I know we had an issue because of, you know, easements and stuff. Did we ever think of doing what was recommended in the other development, a smaller sidewalk, and just being able to take where the road should be already?
I'll let Blair address that, but I think the road's already off, on private property, so we don't have any.
Not on the other side of.
We don't have any road.
But on the other side of the road, right? So it goes north, north, south, and then the north side again, because the south side is a lot, there's a cliff, and it's already encroached on the south side past my house. On the 51 Lawrence and Buckley Mann, if it's shorter, you don't have to take any easements, and now you get a sidewalk, because people aren't going to walk through the night, they're going to just walk through the most dangerous part of Lawrence Street.
Hey, Blair.
Right. The problem is, as I said before, you're trying to minimize the amount of times you're crossing back and forth over the road. So originally, we wanted to keep the entire sidewalk on the north side of the road, all the way down, minimized any of those crosswalk issues. You might have one at Eagle Drive, and one at Wade's Crossing. Now with crossing at Karen McCabe's, once you get on that side of the road now, and you cross over Eagle Drive, you would have to cross back over again, once you get down around on that dangerous corner that's not in the right of way, and chew into that hill at a, you have to move that material in order to give yourself the 10 or 15 feet that you need to put in a usable sidewalk. So the numbers just continue to soar and soar as you try to push that in there. So it's not good from a safety standpoint. You're putting a crosswalk on a corner, the road's not in the right of way, you're, you know, trying to do that where it really shouldn't be in the first place.
But you'd put a person on the street instead than crossing it. It doesn't make sense. Right? I mean, I'd rather someone cross the street carefully to a sidewalk than just walk on the street.
There's also.
That's what he's proposing.
Right, but there's also legalities here, too. If you put in an unsafe sidewalk, now you've, the town has opened itself up to the legality of that. If you put in, if you create an unsafe condition, then as to, if you don't do anything, and you're, you're on the road, you're on the road. Without a sidewalk there, you could be said that you probably shouldn't be there.
All right, yeah. That does not really make sense. Although, legality reason maybe, but sleep at night reason, maybe not.
Well, there's no sidewalk now. We're trying to improve.
What if you don't make them cross, then? And just, if you, if you make the sidewalk smaller, like the other one, it goes straight up and doesn't take easements, right?
I think it's because there's a hill that they're trying not to carve out as well on the north side of the street.
They're gonna have to go up a straight hill and possibly do blasting. One little hill's not gonna, you know, I mean, we're making people cross a very dangerous situation to miss a hill, then that doesn't go for the excuse, they just said they try not to make people cross the street. So is it, are you trying not to make people cross the street, or we just trying not to get a sidewalk in the red section?
I think that we have a little bit of a misunderstanding with two ships passing in the night on what the conditions are on the opposing side of the street. The goal here is to maximize safety, given the conditions, and also what the town does and does not have a right to use, and what the town can and cannot feasibly do.
Can, with the smaller limitations, is it feasible to keep the sidewalk on the other side of the street with the smaller footprint of a sidewalk?
No, no, he's unequivocally said no several times to that, that that's going to be a no, boss.
Who said, who said no?
DPW Director.
DPW. We, that, that's, that's off the table. And town meeting gave, took it all off the table, because we have no easement money.
I get the no easement, but I was.
So we cannot work within the footprint because of the difficulty of the easement that's there already. And because of the topography of the layout, we cannot put a sidewalk there safely at this point.
So it is safer to have people cross the road in front of your property than it is to keep them on the opposing side of the street without a street crossing because of the grade issue and several other things that go with the geometry of the roadway?
And if they're walking their dogs, they can go into Wade's Crossing and walk their dogs on that sidewalk.
As they choose.
I'm just worried about the people that live 51, 236. They can't get to a sidewalk. And Ash just said he walks it four times a day, so he will be on that street with no sidewalk.
That is correct.
So there you go. Do you want someone to cross, or do you want a human on that street?
Well, so, I mean, so I assume, well, first of all, I think we could ask Ash his opinion about walking.
Well, no, because you may move, you know, like, it's just a human. It's not a specific person, right? It's 51, 30, 30, I don't know, 32, 36.
So I put up on the screen, and you can see, this is, this is, you can see how Lawrence Street, how it goes within the layout. So these dark lines is the layout of Lawrence Street, and there is this, this is Lawrence Street.
Right.
So it's not as simple as just.
Like 85% off the right of way?
Yeah. So you can't, so on the south side of Lawrence Street.
Right away.
There is no, there is no easement available for a sidewalk without buying it from people, without.
Or moving the road.
Or moving the road. And at this moment, there's no discussions of moving the road.
We don't have the funding for the easements.
And we don't have the funding for the easements, so.
Or the funding to move the road.
Or the funding to move the roads, which is even greater than the easements, probably. So.
So we're looking at a situation where we have either a total waiver and no sidewalk, because we have a bunch of, we have a stew of unfavorable conditions, or we have a slightly imperfect sidewalk, but we have an improved situation. That's what's in front of us tonight. That's basically, we're not going to get a perfect one. We can have a sidewalk that mostly works, or we can have no sidewalk. That's kind of what's in front of us because of the issue with town meeting.
Yeah. No, this chart's much better. This, I assume, is to scale, right? And it is showing way up by the, by Eagle Drive, that the street in the gray part, I assume, are abutting, so they have no space for that. So you need to cross again when you went in a bad section of it. I was thinking, maybe not. You could just keep going.
But you can't.
Yep. This is much better than the not drawn to scale one.
The other plan was illustrated purposes only. It was not engineered.
The other one was not a plan. It was just a.
It was a picture with a line.
An exercise in imagination.
It was to show the phases that we're talking about.
I just want to continue on. Is there anybody else that has questions or comments on this?
Ash and Sandy.
Go ahead, Ash.
Yeah, I just heard my name, and it's, you know, of the opinion, we already walked the road with crosswalks. That does make it safer. It's, there's no crystal ball. You can't tell when, you know, some teenager's learning how to drive, and we're going to have to dodge. But it's with two dogs and a baby. We've been doing this for over a year, and over three years with the, you know, walking this, that I like this plan. I'm in favor of it. Is it perfect? No. But crosswalks, going back and forth, it's, it's going to be better than what we already have, and it's going to put some safety in it ease, at least in my mind, that we have that added to our community.
Thank you. And I think I saw somebody else with a hand up. Sandy?
Sandy.
Sandy?
Hi. So now I'm looking at this drawing, which is to scale. So, so we're still not addressing the most dangerous part of the road? Is that, is that what we're, this corner is the most dangerous part?
That is correct.
And so let's, I didn't follow. We're waiting until somebody buys Buckley and Mann, and they will do this?
We're not waiting for anything. We, these are our options. We don't have funding to gain the easements to put, to put the sidewalk where we hope to put it. We don't, we don't have an option. We don't have the funding to do it. So.
I, I understand, but the sidewalk was part of this development.
Right.
Right? And so now we're indefinitely postponing, in my mind, because Buckley and Mann is nowhere in the near future, right?
We have no idea what's going on.
As far as we can tell. Right? So there, I wish we could talk about it maybe on another night, and figure out a way to put the sidewalk in this most dangerous area, and possibly buy a smaller amount. It doesn't look like you need a lot on the, on Karen's side of the road. And how are you, the other question is, how are you going to put the water main to Wade's Crossing in the middle of the road, when potentially, you're, you're not even sure where the middle of the road is at this point? Like, I don't understand how we're not addressing that the right of way is not proper. And where is the water main going?
I don't know myself either way. So the water main, actually, as long as conditions permit, the water main will be a few feet off of the north side of the road. It doesn't run right up the center of the road. Generally, water mains will run in one lane or the other. There is drainage there, so that's going to be something to contend with. That's been there for decades and decades, back to before maps and drawings and blueprints were done. So as we excavate, we'll tackle that when we get there. But there is room, there is sufficient room within the right of way where the road sits to be a couple of feet off the curb and make the corner. That corner, that, all that material would have to come out of there. The town just doesn't, you know, I get, you know, just less than about $400,000 in Chapter 90 funds for roadwork every year from the state. There isn't, there just is not money to tackle a project like this for that corner for sidewalk.
So do we have anybody who works for the town that can look at how to get funding for infrastructure? Because this seems like we're giving up, just because 60 people at town meeting, and you didn't even have a plan in front of them that was to scale, I can only assume.
There was a plan there.
Yep. But where is it? We didn't see it tonight.
You said a town meeting where the vote mattered.
At the town meeting, there was a plan at the town meeting. I was there.
Okay.
The plan that's on the screen.
That's not even the plan we're talking about now. So I think you could bring it to town meeting for the other, for the red part. Why aren't we doing that? Why are we waiting for Buckley and Mann?
It went to town meeting, it was voted down, so now the developer's moving forward, and we have to make a decision.
That was the other side of the road, right?
Making it smaller doesn't necessarily get around the fundamental issue of whether it's $40,000, $50,000, $75,000. The price doesn't necessarily matter. I've given understand that we have at least one abutter that probably would have been in opposition and would have been amenable to selling an easement. There, an easement is a long road, and part of the issue is that at town meeting, whether it was 60 people, at town meeting in their infinite wisdom on this one, said that this was not a priority at that price. And so it's.
But that's not the plan we're talking about right now. We could consider.
It is. It was, that was what was voted on. They were asked, can we take a portion of these four to five yards? And the town and town meeting said, we don't want to pay for that. So the answer, when you don't have money to buy it, is unless they want to give it to us, we don't get it. You have to buy it. And we aren't able to buy it because we don't have the money.
So I understand that. That was for a different plan than what was presented tonight.
It's the same, it's the same, I, it's the same, the, what was appraised has not changed. What was in play at town meeting has not changed. There's very stringent standards around this. It's not, it's not like tricky pool. I was, I can neither confirm nor deny what everybody at town meeting thought about this. I have personally seen a lot of things like this fail at town meeting, because when push comes to shove, people like to talk about liking sidewalks, but they don't really like to pay for them. And while you personally feel this because you live right here, not all of your neighbors feel you on that. And that's what we.
I don't live right there. I'm a concerned citizen. I don't live right there. But we could still look at a smaller sidewalk without the three-foot strip like we just looked at for the other subdivision.
The strip isn't really the cost driver on the sidewalk. The price, what drives the cost is actually the installation, the material cost, and what you have to do to prep the site to put it in there. The parkway is, that's what you call the grass strip. That's, that's not what you're really, that's not what you're buying. It's not, that's not the issue.
So on this corner, you have three options. You can, you can buy, you can buy, you can extend your right of way to the south. You could move the road to the north, or you could try, or you have to excavate that hill to give yourself a flat spot at least 10 feet wide for a sidewalk, because as it climbs up from the existing road, it's a straight-up hill. So those are your only three options on that corner.
Yeah.
And none of them.
So why aren't we looking at your first option in more detail?
First option.
To move the road?
Because that's going to cost way more than 56 or $55,000. That option exceeds the expense of the easement. So if the $55,000 was a deal breaker price, doing more expensive work is also presumed to be a deal breaker.
It's very flat on the south side.
Yes, but we don't own it is the problem. It's probably why the road is moving there and encroaching, is because it's flat and it's a desirable place to be. But unfortunately, because the town doesn't own it, we don't have the right to put anything there. That's illegal.
Well, would vote eminent domain?
You have to pay, eminent domain is a taking, and you have to pay for it. It's the same process that we're actually going through.
The legal, the legal cost for an eminent domain taking is going to exceed probably $55,000.
Well, and you still have to pay fair market value. We've already determined fair market value of the easements is $55,000. So eminent domain is still going to cost $55,000 plus $1 to $2 million in legal fees. So that's not going to do it either. We could actually blast the rock for that price. The rock blasting is probably between $100 to $500,000, depending on what you have to retain in terms of material. So if $55,000 is our bargain basement price, which it actually is, and I have no idea whether or not town meeting understood this, but that's as cheap as it gets. We can't beat that price, which is why we're in this pickle.
So why don't we try and bring it to town meeting again? It's because.
We certainly could do that, but we would have to bifurcate it from this permitting process, because it's not the developer's fault at that rate.
That's fine that we can pursue all that, but we have to react today to the development. It doesn't mean you can't pursue what you're talking about down the road. It just means we have to, we have to have this, the developer has the right to move forward, and he's saying.
And we have to do our diligence to allow him to do so.
So we have to react to that. We have to respond to that. Doesn't mean down the road.
Okay, I agree. Let's, let's bring it, but let's bring it without the three-foot strip. I think it would make the cost actually less, because you're actually buying less land. I disagree with the cost is going to be the same.
Easements, you don't buy actual land, though. You're only buying access, and you're only buying access for that strip. It literally makes no difference when you're not accessing the middle strip. It, that's not how the valuation is determined on an appraisal process. I don't know if the appraiser came in and talked to everybody. They usually don't. That's not how they roll. But they have, there's a, it's long-winded, it's convoluted. And again, because of the ADA issues that we referenced on the last sidewalk, we can't just necessarily shrink the sidewalk either. It's not a great situation. I think we all understand your frustration and share it. I think all of us are sick of being on unsafe streets. It's just that this one developer can't solve this particular problem in the compass of this permit, because it's, because the town basically didn't do what we needed to do to honor the rest of the comp permit. We need, the town meeting needed to approve this in order for the developer to really be held to it. Legally, I don't even know how much we can hold the developer to this condition, now that we did not come through on town meeting. I questioned that myself.
Right.
I questioned it the night of town meeting.
But we have, we have this condition, right? And we have, we have a few others here, but if you want.
It's not to say you can't pursue Plan B, but we need some money to have a plan for Plan B. It's not to say you can't pursue Plan B, but we need some money to have a plan for Plan B. We're gonna need money to.
It's no longer.
To fund appraisals, so.
It's no longer necessarily the developer's issue to come up with multiple designs. Yeah, I mean.
So who in town hall could write a grant, an infrastructure grant?
But that's not, that's not the issue before the, we gotta.
But grants don't get written for free. Let me be clear about that.
We're, we're just trying to make a modification to this plan. If somebody wants to draft all this and go to town meeting or draft grants, that's, that's, that's great. I encourage every volunteer to do all that. But that's not what's before this board tonight. I appreciate your concern and, you know, I encourage you, if you want to do that, be the champion on it. I, you know, I think that's what it's all about. People do that all the time. That's how things get done, especially in a small town like this. It's just that we have to react to what we have in front of us and it's not a great situation. I agree with.
Just for the record, I will take any grant anybody wants to give me.
Take any, any grant help that anybody wants to write.
Me too.
And it doesn't mean that down, you know, no pun intended, down the road, this, this maybe sidewalks out there at some point, at some, if money shows up or if people have a plan. I just don't think that from, our hands are tied tonight, it looks like, and we can't accommodate that section. We don't have the funding.
And it's frequently not as simple just to say, just write a grant either. In order to apply for a grant to actually do something with that sidewalk, the town would need to front costs for design. You can't just say, hey, give me money. We have an idea about a sidewalk. You need to actually go through and hire engineers to do the actual drawing work. And so, the average upfront cost on a project like that is probably still gonna be $55,000.
In this day and age, we, we put in about 20%.
Yeah, and so, and whatever we're, you know, admin is, the total admin cost on that grant is definitely going to admin. And so it's, that, the money is out there, but it's not easy to get. It's very technical. It is very, very, very competitive. And so, I just wanna put that plug out there that the staff is doing the work.
That's the next piece of it.
And it's, you know, it's not, it's not as simple as it sounds. So any volunteers who want to do it, we absolutely encourage. I won't do it for pay. I'll put it that way, though.
So if we, if there are any other, we have, we have another section to talk about and we want to tie the whole thing together. So if we want, if there's no, no specific questions on this one?
I had a question on this. So in the, in the writing, it took a lot of work and I thank Joe that's on the board. We're here because of him. But, um, it was written to make sure the developer was footing the bill. I want other people to know that. Like, he put, he has, and if he doesn't, so I know you're saying, oh, well, be this and be that. The, the developer is the one being the engineer. So, you know, laugh as you can about the, about the getting a grant. The town is not on it. The developer is only putting one sidewalk in his development to be able to put one sidewalk on here. So he's getting off the hook of a two sidewalk to put a sidewalk here.
He's not getting off any hook. We can't, we can't accommodate it. The, the, we could say the same.
So, this is leading to my question.
He agreed to it and he was, he would still, I'll let him speak for himself, but he would honor that, but we can't, we can't accommodate it.
But I have a question for that. So he's not doing this however many.
And neither was the town.
Of it.
Neither, neither was the town getting the easements for him.
I have a, can I ask my question?
Please go right ahead.
At this point, we're agreeing to give up, this is my question, I have two of them, to give up him paying for this section of the sidewalk. Is that the case?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we're talking about it. We're just vetting it all up, but that's, that's possible, yeah?
Yeah. And then there was a remark at the beginning that it was written poorly, which I probably agree with. It said to get to Cranberry Meadow, but there's a few, probably another 100 feet to actually get to the bridge, right? From Cranberry Meadow to the bridge. So I'm assuming, just because it's written different, the developer's getting off, I don't know how many thousands of feet to do, a few hundred feet. So the developer will make it go all the way to the bridge, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then what about the difference, right? Because, again, I'm very thankful this sidewalks. I still not sure if I ever believe it.
There's no, there's no difference.
But he's now getting off thousands of feet of sidewalk. Does that then get put into the Norfolk sidewalk fund? So maybe, maybe we can't use it right away and, you know, but another neighborhood could use that thousands and thousands of feet of sidewalk.
That would be illegal because we've already negotiated the permits and we, we don't have the authority to renegotiate and say, you're now going to make a donation. That, um, that's, and whether, the number of feet. The reality is, again, the town, the developer is not saying he does not want to build this sidewalk. The developer does not have the right to build this sidewalk because of the easement issue. And so it's not necessarily letting him off the hook, but we can't exchange one for the other. We can't say, hey, we're gonna take your money instead and guess, you know, what it might have cost. We simply, as a town, did not facilitate what he needed.
Thinking out of the box.
Go ahead, Joe.
Obviously, we have this section of, we have to waive to get forward here. The issue, though, is that, and Karen brought up a good point. I mean, if there was something, because the developer won't be doing anything in this particular waived section, if that's what it comes to in a decision. Is there something that could contribute to our sidewalk funding in some way that, you know, at least?
It's gonna be.
For not having to do this, it, it taking, I don't know. I don't know if there's, can that be asked, by the way? I don't even know if that can be asked.
I think the issue that we run into is because this permit is in jeopardy is extortion.
It, I, I think you're right.
Is that true?
That's my take on it.
See, I don't know the answer.
I don't want to give a legal opinion on it, but.
That's literally why we, why you can't start doing.
We weren't asking the developer to put up money. We asked him to do some work. He agreed to it in good faith and he still honor it. We can't deliver.
We don't allow impact fees in Massachusetts. So like the provision of it, if you're going to build here, put it in a sidewalk fund. There's not, even if we did it upfront, there's not a good legal path, but on the backside, it looks like extortion.
One of the things we've done, though, in the past, when developments have gone in with only one sidewalks versus no sidewalks, something did go to a sidewalk fund. So they wouldn't have to develop the second sidewalk.
Was it negotiated upfront, though?
That was negotiated at the time.
At the time of the.
That's, that's what we're running into is that because he has a permit in jeopardy for something that's under construction, we enter this different area of the law.
All right. So I'm, I'm just stating a fact of how things have happened in the past, but it, but agreed.
Tom, you got your lawyer here tonight? Am I sending you a bill?
So.
No, but with that, with that fact, though, that those are things that were negotiated at the time of the permit, I, obviously, that's a challenge, that, that type of idea.
So, yeah, because if you, everything that they agree to upfront is, you know, you have room to negotiate and that's fair as long as they agree to it. But when you change it on the backside, the, because the facts on this stink because of, because of actions due to the town. It is not simply a straight, you know, the facts aren't straight, that it's just the developer coming and saying, I don't want to do this. The facts are that the town did not do what was necessary to facilitate. This is why I don't like the off-site sidewalk conditions personally. I love sidewalks, but then you run into stuff like this where it gets really sticky on the back end.
To date, it's the only way we've gotten some additional sidewalks.
Yeah.
It's the only.
Oh, I, no, it's the only way to do it.
Only way it's happened.
I like it better in the subdivision process.
Sure. Right, that makes sense.
But, so that's my part, my perspective on this is that this is kind of a lucky break in some respects. But, because, I mean, the, the other option would be to say, okay, we're going to hold you to it. You're still going to build this sidewalk, but you have to incur the expense of building on the other side of the street because of the easement issue. And because of the cost of that being pretty well out of proportion, that becomes its own nexus issue. So I feel like you can, you can argue it like 15 different ways legally, but I feel like you're gonna keep coming up to valid challenges on the, on the applicant side.
A part of it comes down, I'm sure, to the fact that, you know, it could only cost so much to run a sidewalk in his development versus what it would cost out in the streets. I know, so that would be the challenge, but, okay. I just, like I said, obviously, the desire here was to have a sidewalk.
Do you want to add to it? Okay, we want to, do we want to move on to, I'm sorry. We have another question.
Did you ask the developer what he's willing? I mean, he's very accommodating sometimes.
He could always raise his hand.
Donna. Donna Jones. Could someone clarify at town meeting? I believe there, there was mentioned that there was something in the original agreement that if he couldn't put the sidewalk, he, the developer, couldn't put the sidewalk on the north side of Lawrence Street? That there was some accommodation of financial payment to the town?
I wasn't at town meeting, so I can't, I don't know.
Is this in the area of the conditions?
But that was, that was any of the sidewalk.
Yeah, it was any of the sidewalk. There was a, if it wasn't able to proceed, it was $150,000 into the sidewalk fund. But it was into the sidewalk fund and it wasn't, could be used anywhere.
It could be used anywhere in the town.
So the, the, really, the pullback to the big picture on this thing, where we're at tonight, is to try to preserve and have some sidewalk as it was originally intended, as opposed to going down the road where there's no sidewalk and it goes into the sidewalk fund. And then the developer's not putting a sidewalk now. Because if the town Norfolk has to build a sidewalk, it's significantly more money than what a private developer is gonna be able to contract and build. So the idea is to get something and not end up with nothing in the end.
So our actual difference is partial sidewalk or 150 into the sidewalk fund? Is that what's in the conditions?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Because there's provisions in there where.
Any, I would assume any portion of the sidewalk that we can get on Lawrence Road negates $150,000 into anything.
Yes.
But the homeowner, but the homeowners on Lawrence Road that are getting a new development in and around them really would like to have sidewalk up to that section of the, the thing. So what we're trying to do is still preserve as much sidewalk ability on Lawrence Road physically possible and financially possible after the town meeting.
Makes sense, yeah. Say, if, because if we take the partial L on the sidewalk, we, because the sidewalk that is being built again is gonna be worth more than $150,000.
And plus, you wouldn't get, you, you wouldn't even, between the easements and all that, that money's gonna go away. You're gonna have nothing.
Yeah, this makes sense.
And, and I'm pretty darn sure if the $150,000 came to the town for sidewalks, it's not necessarily going on Lawrence Road. It's gonna go somewhere else, like in front of Age Al of Day or somewhere else where it needs to go.
Yeah, whatever's deemed highest priority. This, this makes.
So the crosswalks, though, will still give us crosswalks connecting to sidewalks.
Correct.
Correct.
And that, and there is existing sidewalk on Eagle Drive and through that neighborhood, so. I know that. There is a path, if you wanted to go, obviously, it's the longer route, but there is a path to get to Waits Crossing from the causeway on all sidewalks. It's just those residents in the front that don't have that. It's route.
Yeah. Okay.
A lot happened, guys.
We have a third part.
Oh, no. You're kidding.
We have a third part, if you want to go on to that, Rich. And while we go through, so I just want to thank everybody on Zoom. Everyone's questions and concerns are of all value.
Third part.
What's the third part?
Well, the end game. What's, what's, I think it's, at some point, we wanted just to talk about.
Yellow. So what's the yellow?
Right.
It's existing sidewalk.
Existing sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
Good on that.
I'm good on that. We don't need to prove that.
Connectivity is the end game.
Well, I think he wanted to touch on that hopes and dreams and, and, you know, what we talked about with the man property. And, and I know the, the folks on Zoom said, well, that may never happen. You're right, it may never happen, but.
Oh, yes.
If you want to talk about that, at least, you know, we.
I did talk about it earlier, but it kind of got lost in the whole.
It's got lost.
Is that if, again, and I know it's down the road, but.
If this happens, this, you know, we'll, I don't know if I'll be at the board that time, but we'll, we'll look at all this connectivity on the next piece, too.
Correct, because there is, again, if we look at, if the man property gets developed, and I know it's an if, but a new roadway would come in here, which then could have a sidewalk to Waits Crossing there. And we could look at building a sidewalk on the other side, because then we'd be looking at moving the road. So there's a lot of pieces of this that would potentially open up along with drainage as well, because there is no drainage. That's a leech and catch basin there, it's nowhere. So, you know, there's no, there's no accommodation for drainage in, in the roadways as well that we'd have to address. So there's like layered of issues that could be addressed down the road, but not today. But what's before us?
So we are, we are losing an opportunity, but we don't have the funding. So I, I don't know what the, what the other option is.
I think it's.
I, I agree with comments, but we don't have the funding.
I mean.
But if I heard correctly, we're gonna lose over $100,000 worth of sidewalk, $150,000 worth of sidewalk if we don't come to a compromise.
I think the, I think that green section's to the town is worth more than $150,000.
To the town it is.
To the town.
Yeah.
And, and so in reality, if we don't do the green section, because at town meeting, pretty much, what they pretty much said was, we're not allowing you to do easements for the 55,000. Those easements extended from the bottom of the red line all the way up to the top of the green line, wherever they may be. Pretty much at town meeting, they're saying, no sidewalk for you at this point. And so, we're gonna take the, we want the $150,000 into the coffers, is what I kind of sounded, heard at the town meeting. But I think the people in, on Lawrence Street should get a sidewalk. So I'm, I'm all for this plan to get the sidewalk because it's way more sidewalk than $150,000 is gonna get us anywhere else in the town of Norfolk. So it's not perfect. It's not the whole plan that was approved in the, the thing, but it's still better than not getting any sidewalk for the people on Lawrence Street.
And you could ask Blair, if he wants to answer the question. Blair, would you rather have the developer build the green section of sidewalks or would you rather have $150,000 for a sidewalk fund? And what would, you know?
So my, my thought process here was, obviously, right after town meeting, I went back up there and looked at it because I'm trying to, trying to get this sidewalk installed for all the residents that are there. I know it's been a hot-button issue. And that was where I came up with the plan to cross the street because of the issues we have with right of way and not being able to get the easements that we needed to. You know, that's a, that is a compromise, as far as I'm concerned, to cross over there. I didn't want to cross over there, but it works because there are already sidewalks on Eagle Drive. I think it's, I think it's a good move for the town to get the sidewalk here and, and get it done. And, you know, I, I, when you start to price it out, what it would cost the town is in excess of $150,000.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has any questions on this?
Can, can you, can you keep that view up? That was up. Oh, you're waiting to see if any hands come up? I'm sorry.
Okay, there's no hands up. Does the board have any other questions?
I, I have a question about, because I'm thinking about what we're gonna do for a motion here.
Well, I think, let's go back to the original request from the developer.
Yeah. It's really the same kind of thing, but we have, but we have to talk about, of course, not affecting any mailboxes, right?
Right.
At the same time, this is gonna have to put into the decision that we agree to a waiver here between, I guess, it's Eagle Drive, right?
Eagle Drive.
It's Eagle Drive on both sides?
No, Brett's Farm, wrong.
Brett's Farm. So that, that would have to be waived in our decision.
To waive or remove the section of sidewalk between.
Where, where the town couldn't provide access.
Love that phrasing.
Yeah.
Completely agree with that.
Just because.
That's exactly it. Because that's exactly why we can't put the sidewalk there.
I feel a little uncomfortable making the motion myself. I wonder if somebody would make that for me.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we amend the decision and we authorize the DPW director to make changes in the field where we can. But I'll come back to the board. And we'd also further waive the requirement that sidewalks be built in areas where the town cannot provide access.
The mailbox board.
The mailbox thing.
Oh, and, and.
No mailboxes.
And no, and no, no mailboxes to be relocated without ZBA, CBA approval.
All right.
Do you have a chat comment?
Uh, that's about brush removal. Off topic. We'll let, we'll send that to you later.
I can't see it, but.
I can.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll.
That's just, that's just a cutting on the side of the road, uh, request.
If you make, you make the motion, do you want to go on to discussion point?
Well, we'll put it up for, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the, the first section, first phase, not drawn that way in the rough plan we had there. That'll be continuous, though, to the crosswalk, the crossover and then make it to Eagle Drive. That what I, that's what I heard, that's not what I saw there. I saw there. The green line was interrupted on, on the south side.
So it does get interrupted at the top of the hill where old Lawrence Street is?
Yeah.
So there's a.
Oh, it's just crossing a road, right.
Right. It crosses old Lawrence Street and then it.
So those are crosses in Lauren, okay. So we do another crosswalk for a section there or something?
Right. There's, there's a crosswalk that runs parallel to Lawrence Street to get across that, what used to be the old Lawrence Street that.
This gap will have a crosswalk here right there.
Okay, that wasn't, I carefully asked that earlier.
So I, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
This, we're, we're allowed to give minor.
Modifications.
Modifications. Is this considered a minor modification to an overall plan? Or is this more than minor?
Well, my thought was, this has nothing to do with the, this is an offsite improvement. So it doesn't change the developer's plan for the development.
I think we might want to get council to check it out. Just because if we, if we allow this, and because we are allowed to not do anything because town meeting shot it down. That's the way I view that. So in reality, the zoning board is trying to adhere to what the zoning board had put into place prior to without easements. The easements were, but is this considered now a major change to that? Or is it a minor?
So let me just.
Are we still allowed to do this? That's my, my concern is whether we're allowed to do it.
So just hold on to.
Because the condition is it goes from point A to point B, or you get $150,000. Are we allowed to make this half and half in reality?
I think the original condition, and certainly correct me if I'm wrong, because it's been a couple of years since I read it. But when this originally came down, I believe it was that the condition was that there was 60 day window where myself and the developer had to come to an agreement as to how this was all going to play out. And, and if that couldn't happen, that triggered the 150,000. Obviously, we've been working on this, so.
I believe you operate within that, see the red box?
Yeah. I just can't read it because I have no eyesight.
All right.
The acquisition of easements is deemed necessary by the DPW and the ZBA. The town of Norfolk has the option of obtaining the said easements or proposing a different design that does not require easements, provided all work remains on the northern side of Lawrence Street, or a design that requires easements from the different private property owners. The applicant, the applicant will cooperate with the town's efforts to acquire easements to modify the design of the sidewalk to avoid easements so long as such cooperation does not impose a financial burden on the applicant of greater than $10,000.
Well, that was kind. And then we get down to the 150.
Right. But the one, the one thing that I read in there that it was a requirement, easements provided all work remains on the northern side. We're changing that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
And is that minor or major? That's, that's, that's my question.
The scope of this entire development?
Minor. I would, so I.
It's an offsite improvement.
I hear what you're saying.
In particular, what I deem a major modification generally is when the unit count changes, the bedroom count changes, anything that would modify their permit with mass housing is, I would consider a major modification because that's.
The substance of it.
That, this is an offsite amenity that was a carrot to get a permit, which I treat slightly differently because this, this is like a counterbalancing amenity as opposed to a main component of the actual guts and meat of what the project is. I think this is, I think this safely falls under a minor modification to the conditions from like a mass housing perspective.
And I would agree. I would even think if, if the modification for the sidewalk was within the proposed development, I still think it would be minor because the housing count didn't change. This is offsite, which makes it even more.
Also a town accepted road, which would be my purview. So if I'm allowed to make minor modifications within the right of way, which is under my authority under the board of select.
And he has deemed it necessary.
But we could, I think, if Rich wants to reach out to town council just to get a blessing on that.
No, I, I, I think you're right. I think, I think you're right. The, the major or the minors is correct. The way that this is written, it says North Street, north of the street instead of south of the street. And we do have some switching to the south. My question is, because it's not 100% of what was purviewed from point A to point B, and we're now saying it's from point C to point B, we're, we're foregoing $150,000 in order to do that. This gave us, if you can't do it, you get $150,000 instead. Right now, we're saying we can't do it.
We're saying we can't do it, but we can do something close, which I think that this is written to allow for because it says if the acquisition.
That's my question.
I think, so if you, if we want to, can we diagram this sentence where the commas are located? But I think if you give it a really tight read on it, it anticipated the fact that sidewalk placement would be difficult, that DPW director would need to make final determinations. And it says that we have the option to obtain the easement. So first of all, the town never even committed to obtaining the easement. So this was already written with a gut out of, this was already written with some loosey goosey in mind. So the town has the options to obtain said easement or to propose a different design that does not require easements, provided that all the work remains on the northern side of the street. So we have the ability to do a strike through in the sentence because the situation, this is kind of like a variance situation where like the soil conditions, we've got a number of strange factors that have converged. So I don't think we're really outside of the ballpark because we're also not proposing construction on the lots that weren't previously contemplated and read. That I would think is kind of a bigger thing to go from one to the other without those folks having agreed to it, even though they don't own it. It's the right way issue. I, we all know, but we know. And so, but I think if one, if you get to the next section, though, if one year following the approval of the sidewalk construction plan, any necessary easements have not been obtained, or a modified design has not been developed and accepted through cooperation, which I think is what we're trying to do, then they pay us. But I think that we should probably try to do as much jujitsu as we can to get as much sidewalk as we can because we're getting more than $150,000 in sidewalk even still. I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
Whether or not it.
If, if you read that following, that after the red line, you have a year after the things. And if you can't get the necessary things, then $150,000 goes to the town. We can't get the easements.
On the north side, however, we have, we have provided an alternative plan. DPW has provided an alternative plan. So the.
This is an out for the developer. The developer, in reality, I read it, he has a choice to either do the sidewalk or give you $150,000.
I am reading the exact same thing, which is why I'm saying let's not, you know, bend him over the barrel here.
I hear you. But I mean, I think this is in Tommy's boat, not in ours in reality. We're, we're saying, okay, you can do the green or give us $150,000.
All he's asking for, his request tonight, because he read it, is to vote favorably to allow the DPW to make modification changes in the field.
So he can construct what he can construct.
So that, that's his request. And he's here, he can comment on that.
Yeah, that's it.
He's done a lot on these for us.
I mean, I have some offline ideas on his behalf that I'm not going to discuss right now because I have some ideas for him. But I, I don't see, we're not playing a strong hand, I don't think.
I don't think we have a strong hand at all, since the town shot us down.
Yeah. And so.
From town meeting, I wasn't there, but the, the easement specifically were for the south side?
North. It was for the north side.
It was for the north side.
From, from all, from point A to point B, whatever, whatever needed to be taken, that was $55,000 roughly on the north side. And that would have kept the sidewalk all on the north side.
Right. The south side doesn't require any easement.
That's correct. Well, we're already, we're already encroaching on the south side.
It doesn't need any easement there. The south side does need easement past Eagle Drive, and that's why.
On the red, yeah.
That's why we're, we're not going that way because that doesn't work geographically.
So there was a motion? There was a second? And then there was a lot of discussion?
Way to bring it back.
So.
All the question?
That's a tough one.
So.
Move the questions, obviously.
The question is whether or not to refer to council. So we should decide.
There was a question about that.
Should the council draft the decision for this?
Clear.
Should the council be drafting the final decision?
That's the kicker.
Somebody can make a motion that you want to have council draft the, draft our motion? I mean, you can, no one's moved this motion.
So.
Well, it hasn't been.
Some questions.
It has been moved, but.
Do we want to table, so it's a question that we want to table this until council weighs in to determine whether or not this is a major modification? Or do we want to move forward with the modifications? Is that what we're debating?
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that. It's a minor. I, I don't have, I just wanted to question that.
So are we okay with the way the motions were? Anything we need to capture? We didn't capture?
No, I think the motion's written fine. I just.
I don't need to make that an issue.
No. And I think, I think, I think Tom might have a question.
So town meeting was not for this, no, town meeting was for this design. It was the north side.
Town meeting was for the north side design.
For the north side. Let me rephrase.
Go right ahead.
Not on the plan tonight. Town meeting was for the north side design. Tonight, you wear the red, yellow, and green. That's the south side concept plan.
That's the alternative plan.
This is a new plan.
That's the alternate.
To avoid easements.
Donna Jones, once again, as to what actually happened at town meeting. It's the town meeting process. There's a written warrant. The advisory board gives their opinion on it. They make the motion and they make the recommendation as to what to do about it. It, the people in the auditorium put a plan on the screen. That was the second one we saw tonight with the details of the street. Advisory board stood up and said, we recommend we not pay for this. The town meeting process is you need to vote on whether to accept that replacement motion. Do we pay for it or not? We couldn't, I actually went up and said, could I see, will seeing details on the screen of this plan help me decide whether to pay for it or not? And they did zoom in on it, but the details were not discussed. They did not discuss whether it's north side of the street or south side of the street, how many lots it affected. The only question voters got to vote on because voters said, let's not pay $55,000. We couldn't discuss the actual plan.
I want to make an amendment to my motion. And I'm just going to add, it's the same motion. I'm going to add to it, subject to town, town council's opinion that this is not a major modification and that the ZBA has legal standing to make this motion or make this decision.
You're on fire with the wordsmithing tonight.
I have a lot of help. So that's my motion. Is there a second?
I second that. I do.
Is there any other discussion on that? Be or none? All those in favor say aye. Be a roll call vote.
Come on, fellas.
I'll go for us. Tim Martin, aye.
All right. I'll just say that in, in the, in the spirit of retaining what sidewalks we're going to get on Lawrence Street and not have come up with zero sidewalks, I have to say aye.
I am going to say aye because we're still trying to get sidewalks on Lawrence.
Yeah, right.
Just make, if I go aye to get sidewalks.
Thank you, everyone. So we wish we could have done more.
Just a lot of discipline.
We didn't see a path to it. So.
Okay, the ZBA is just one avenue to sidewalks. It's good to see a very engaged, interested public.
So, so if, if.
This was important.
If I can, if I can say something to the public, the plans that we get for, from developers and what we try and do is we try to benefit the whole town in the process. One of the things that was a benefit to the whole town was sidewalks on Lawrence Street. That was one of the things that was put before everybody. Now, doing that, we had an obligation as a town to do our due diligence and our side of it. And that was to come up with $55,000 to buy the easement so that we could actually let the developer put that sidewalk in. Because the town did not want to pay the $55,000, there's a hard time to get sidewalks in on Lawrence Street now. So be careful what you vote on at town meetings or don't vote on. Because that's, that, honestly, there were 60 people there. I was one of them. I did not agree to it, but it was, it was, it came across very loud and clear from the advisory board not to pay for it. So I think as an advisory board and a zoning board and a planning board and any other board in the town, there needs to be some working together. And this was not a time where that was worked well. So I think as a town, we need to pay attention to that.
No, I agree. We all, we all, we all didn't do well on this one. And I, and I appreciate the neighbors out there. And I, I don't disagree with you. If there's something we could do, I, we all think, Robert.
And also, you know, when, this was when I first got here and some of it was probably before I got here, but my office is certainly available in the future when these types of projects come along. I'm sure this isn't the last one. My office, myself are available in the beginning stages of this so that, you know, these aren't things that we're trying to clean up two years later. You know, we're available, we're here every day, certainly willing to make ourselves available to help the board make decisions.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Blair.
Thank you.
And you were helpful tonight.
Yeah.
Don't be disheartened, folks. The opportunity may not have come through on this one, but that doesn't, you know, just because, you know, it's not going to work in the context of this one development. It's not over.
We're hoping that council, we're hoping that council will 100% agree with what we came up with so that we get some sidewalks.
Karen has something to say.
Yeah, that was it. The council can definitely agree with it because all that wording says it has to be done in 60 days, it has to be done a year. We're three years later. So not one other thing is the, is being put to the exact point. So, and then in it, it said, if the easements weren't allowed, you can work with the DPW and stuff. So it says right in there that you can do it. I'm not even understanding why it's going to town council. But.
That's kind, if you want a more thorough, I'm going to answer this one for Rich. If you want a more thorough kind of explanation, because that kind of is a longer question, give Rich a call during the day and he can kind of walk you through some of what happened tonight. I think we're kind of getting ready to take our next items.
I'm well aware what happened.
We're, we're hoping we've got some sidewalks coming your way, Karen.
All right. Thank you. Moving along. After all that, well, I did say about an hour ago to some of the people, you're happy now, but let's hope you're happy in 20 minutes. I should have said an hour and 20 minutes, but, and I don't, I don't say that in jest. I'm serious. You know, we, we all hope for a better outcome. But we've got to deal with what we have. And we didn't, we didn't have the funds.
Well, it'll be, you know, it's always a learning experience.
Okay. So, and I want to thank the developer who had input tonight and Blair for coming out. And now he's got more homework on mailboxes. That's fine.
Brush apparently, hey?
Right.
On Lawrence Street, there's a brush around the corner making it hard to see.
Now, after all that, on the agenda, we have town planner updates.
There's none right there.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that. But it also says deliberations done. I think we do have some deliberations.
Well, we did, we, we're supposed to deliberate on Two Pond Street and 175.
If you want to just circle back to the top of the agenda.
Oh, Two Pond Street.
Go with that seven, yeah, Two Pond.
Oh, right.
They were continued. Can we, that's.
Just continue with the next.
Okay, so.
You guys already saw them once, right?
No, not.
No, no, no.
This is the first time.
Oh, okay.
Two Pond. And what's the special permit for again?
That's the.
Or deck.
That's the deck.
Oh, deck, okay.
And the, and the setback.
Okay.
So can we make, someone make a motion on the tool to continue that?
Next meeting officially, July?
July 19.
July 19.
Good night, Blair. Thank you.
Thank you, Blair.
Thank you very much.
That he comes early.
Thank you again.
Blair, thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion now. I make a motion that we continue the hearing for Two Pond Street.
There's a small pond, yeah.
Two Alt Palm Street for the special permit to the July 19 meeting, 2023 at 7:05.
Is there a second?
7:01.
I second that.
7:01, I'm sorry. 7:01.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
Edit 7:01.
All those in say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Joe.
Anything else that night? Yeah, not yet.
Unless we hear from town council.
We don't have anything.
No, town council agrees that we're fine.
He says, we're having a tough time that night. I said, well, go.
Yeah, right. That's true. 175 North Street. Did we have anything we needed to?
So we've now into deliberations. We want to do these tonight and wrap these up.
Well, I think they're, I think, I think 175. Well, I think, I think 175, he's kind of waiting to hear what we have to say so that he could actually start the project. That's the one with the garage, right?
Yeah. 175, no, second story.
He's the second story, okay. Yeah, that one didn't change anything.
No, no.
There's no footprint, no setback changes, no nothing.
So if you want, I can, I don't have for you, but I can draft a decision and you can just, you know, vote on July 19th.
Yeah.
A straw vote? I mean, I would support the special permit for 175.
I would support the-
Was it just a special permit or just a special?
Yeah, it's just a special permit. He's putting a second floor on the house that exists already.
Is there any issue with voting it tonight?
And then subject to a decision?
Subjected to the written decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, straightforward, get them to construction.
Yeah, why don't we?
Yeah, but he still would have to be careful if he doesn't have any.
That's right.
But we can always modify that afterwards.
Well, you want to vote tonight, I'll draft a decision, you can come and sign it.
Yeah, and then we come in and sign it.
We haven't got any edits on the decision or anything, but this is a straightforward project.
That was a deck, right?
Correct.
Right, for 175, was it just addition of a deck?
No. 175, second floor.
Second story.
Oh, second story within the existing floor, right?
Yeah, I don't see any reason to make that.
So he's adding one additional floor?
So if we vote him tonight, we can get to construction, so it'll save him a month.
Right. He's only going to need a site plan that, you know, to work with.
Right, all right. I'll make a motion that we approve the special permit for 175 North Street for the addition of the second story of the house within the same existing structure, of same existing footprint.
I second that.
Any, subject to the-
Submission of a site plan.
Site plan.
Yes.
To Rich.
To Rich.
Yep, don't bring it back.
And execution of the decision.
Give it to him.
Yep, don't bring it back.
Yeah.
Get rid of us.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Joe, you said aye?
I said aye, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Five Lakes Shore Drive is the other one that's adding the garage.
Got it.
Garage, and then the decks are the special.
Right, so I was trying to write this up before, so let me see if I can come up there, just, you ready for at least a?
Go for it.
Okay, so a motion. I make a motion that we approve the special permit on this end variance for Five Lakes Shore Drive to one, extend the deck not to exceed the, not to encroach further on the setback, and the addition of a garage that will exceed, that will be, that will encroach into the encroachment, the variance, excuse me, for the addition of a garage.
And do we want to have our reasons for the variance on there? Do we have the findings?
We make it easier just for Rich to draft the condition, say, subject to the drawings submitted by whoever the name is on the drawings, and that the project as depicted, and then-
Will you clarify that, again, no impact on the neighborhood?
On the special permit and the variance findings of the unique-
Shape of the lot.
Right.
And it's trifecta front yard action with some squiggly side lot lines.
So on condition that we use-
That was a-
Is there a second on that motion?
Yeah, I second that.
Okay.
Way to go.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, all those?
Aye.
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 I'm not voting on this one, you don't need me, right?
Because you weren't here on the first one.
You can.
I wasn't.
She wasn't here on the first hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you weren't? Oh, all right, that's fine.
But we voted tonight.
You weren't. I've seen it before, this project, I don't know where it's.
This has been around a long time.
He wasn't here last.
You should say right now that you watched the video.
But he came, watched the video. Yeah, I watched the video.
It would be very nice if you said that. He watched the video.
Yeah, and I read the, you know, the meeting stuff.
But this has been extended more than one time, this hearing.
Well, he watched the video and-
And read the minutes.
I read the minutes.
All right, we'll give you the paper so you can sign it afterwards.
Yeah, but, yeah, but this, he had come back, we had seen this before, right?
We didn't see this before.
The first go-around was back in-
Right.
Yeah, we saw it, yeah.
In '21.
Yep.
Been going around a while.
Well, he moved the garage and-
And we've just made him come back this time because he didn't know where his door was going to be.
Right.
That was, that was really the biggest concern that we had, as where he's opening his front door, and he clarified it tonight.
I would just recommend, Chris, just watch the video before we sign the decision.
He already watched it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Paying some penalties of perjury.
He's already watched it.
We're good.
They're reading.
We're good.
And he read the minutes.
All right, so new and old business, oh, correspondence, I'm sorry.
You got it voted, you didn't vote though.
No, we've already-
We did, we all said aye.
We all said aye.
I'm sorry, it must be late.
You are.
All right, you did say aye?
I don't have, is there some correspondence?
Do we have it?
It says we do.
Brendan Properties. Replacing Copperwood Circle Builders.
What? I don't have that correspondence in front of me.
I don't have it either.
It's in the share drive.
I got, nope, I just have a Norfolk survey.
No, it's not printed out, it's on the share drive.
Brendan Properties.
Changing the name of the builder?
And when we say in the motion that, you know, the addition of a garage, we just say per the submitted plans. You know what I'm saying? You okay with that?
It's on the screen if anybody wants to look at it.
Oh, yeah, I read that.
I can't see it, so.
It's just changing the name.
Changing the name of the, on sodium or the builder or-
So they're just putting us on notice? There's nothing for us to act on?
Right, they're just, they're just let us know.
Giving us a courtesy notice, okay.
Right. I was just saying, with the motion for the LeFay Lakes Shore Drive, we should say as per the submitted plans. When we talk about the garage being added, that just means that we're acknowledging the submitted plans for the position of the new garage.
Include that in the review decision.
Usually you just, you include the plan and the date so that you know, because the files get messy, and that way you know which plan it was that was approved, and then we don't have to say it did this, that, and the other thing.
Well, I'd like to, in the motion, I'd just like to amend it to include, per the plans, the dates, as per the dates we received them, you know, for this, right, because he had a plan, he submitted his plan for the garage, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, so I'm just saying, I'm acknowledging the motion, when we say we're approving the variance for an extension of a garage, it's as per the plans we reviewed here tonight that were submitted on whatever date that was.
Today.
Right, exactly.
Yep.
Just, that should be in the, because that's part of it, we're not saying, oh, go build the garage and make it bigger.
Build the garage. I'm going to reference the plan that's been submitted in your decision.
Well, both decisions are basically per, you know, the final decisions.
Both of them will reference that plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, good.
A little sloppy as usual, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Long night.
We have to approve minutes for the 24th?
We do.
Okay, well, I had read them in there, even, yeah, any question? I had no questions. I think we talked about one or two things, right?
They look good to me.
Okay, so I make a motion we approve.
Lane, you did a fabulous job.
Good.
Yeah, I think it was one little edit I told.